Well, good evening, everyone. Heaven knows I hate to interrupt a cheerful conversation, but I am going to do that right now. So, welcome to the City Council for Sammamish Study Session on Tuesday, September 9th. If I'm calling this meeting to order, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
I'm going to move that we allow Councilmember O'Farrell to be absent this meeting. I'm going to motion for that now. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm not going to speak to the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Stewart.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Lamb, if you could please help us with the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge that we are on the land, we acknowledge that we are on the land of the, of the, sorry. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Saluch peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. So, I know many of you are in the room to do public comment. I just want to make sure you saw that the agenda shows that you'll be doing public comment at the end of our business meeting. So, our first topic for discussion will be informational development activity update with David Pyle, Avril Beatty, and Quinton Williamson. And you have your scene.
Good evening, Mayor. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. And as indicated, I have with me this evening our development review team, or a few of them. Not all of them are here this evening. We are going to be providing an update on development activity in the city, some of the trends and themes that we're seeing, where some of the challenges are, and where we think some opportunities are in the future for possible code amendments. We would like to start making this a more regular meeting agenda item for you, where we can keep you up to date on trends in the city and things we're seeing. So with me, I have Avril Beatty, who is our current planning manager. She's here in the middle. I also have Jasavir Singh, who is a senior planner, who primarily works on larger, more complicated development projects. And Quinton Williamson, who also works on more complicated development projects as well. So, these three will be providing a majority of the presentation, and I'll be filling in on some slides, and I'll turn it over to Avril.
Hello. Good evening. Avril Beatty, current planning and permit center manager. So, this evening, we're going to give you an update on most things development. So, who we are. The Department of Community Development reviews permit applications and land use applications throughout the city. We are a small group, or small groups, so we consist of the permit center, which is our technicians who take in and process route all of the applications to our review groups. We have our planners, who do the planning reviews for land use regulations and development standards conformance. And we have our building services group as well. So, we've got plans examiners, who review the actual construction documents. And then we have all of our building inspectors, who are out in the field all day, every day, making sure things are being built safely. So, we are mostly staffed up. We do have one vacant permit technician position that we are currently in the process of recruiting for, and we are hoping to get that filled with a highly qualified candidate soon. And just to let you know, should be very proud of us, we are a very lean staff, and we do a lot of work. So, compared to other cities that are adjacent to us, they all have more staff than we do, even smaller cities like Issaquah. So, other cities that might only be like 50% bigger than us, might have twice as much or three times as much staff as we do. So, we're lean and mean, just to let you know. But we're very nice about it. So, this is a basic overview of our permitting process. This information is also online, so I am not going to read this to you. This is just to indicate that we do everything online. We have our processes. Because we are so lean, we have our SOPs, we follow them, we work really hard to keep to the protocols, keeps things moving, we try to have as well-oiled of a machine as possible. So, we stick with this. For the most part, things go smoothly. For all the permits that these groups review and process, we, well, you hear from the residents, there are a few people who are not happy or are frustrated, which is totally understandable, totally normal. But given all that we review, I'm pretty happy that's as low as a number as it is. So, recent activity. So, these two charts just sort of indicate both the amount of applications that come in, that's on the right, and on the left is the revenue associated with those applications. This also reflects how the economy kind of cooled off the two prior years. Interest rates were really high, and we saw a drop in development applications. With 2025, we see an uptake in applications coming in, and the value of those applications coming in. So, we are busy. If you have questions about these, we can take them at the end. You will also have this presentation as part of the record of this presentation, of this council meeting. So now, I'm going to hand it off to David.
Yeah, so, I, we wanted to, you know, over the years I've worked here, I've heard lots of different points about the different pace of development in the city. We've been through annexations, we've seen a lot of infill growth. We are really running out of large, meaningful assemblages of land where larger projects can be built. And currently, just wanting to highlight the amount of activity, the number of lots we have in the system under review is, we currently have 16 short plats under review, and five of those were submitted in 2025. So, remember that a short plat is fewer than nine lots. We currently have one long plat in review, more than nine lot, nine or more lots, excuse me. And currently, we have, the total number of lots that are in review for creation through a subdivision process is 81 lots. Forty-one of those have, were submitted in 2025. The balance of the other 40 were remnants that were already in review in the system from prior years. Now, remember that a subdivision can take multiple years to review, and even longer for the infrastructure to be built and the homes to start arriving. In many cases, a subdivision can take up to 10 years, really, to reach the point where people arrive and move into the homes. With regard to single-family homes, and this is really where the, the activity is, is in review of new single-family homes. And this is not dependent on lots being created through subdivision. We do still have a small number of vacant lots in the city, or we do see sometimes people demolishing homes and rebuilding them on, on lots where it's tear-down housing stock. We currently have 36 new single-family homes under review in 2025. We've already issued in 2025 22 permits for new homes. We've also finalized 21 homes, and that means that 21 homes have reached the point where they've completed construction and people can move into them. In 2024, for the entire year, we, we finalized 40 new homes. So, here we are, three-quarters of the way through the year, and we finalized 21 homes in 2025. Now, this does not include remodels. I would say the bulk of our activity really is in remodels and additions now, as a city, and that is reflected in the valuation and in some of the subsequent slides.
Thank you, David. So, for middle housing regulations, since we adopted those just in 2025, we have seen quite an uptake from the development community inquiring about middle housing. Specifically, we are hearing they would like to build duplexes, cottages, but we are seeing less of an interest to build four plaques, three plaques, or six plaques. So, we are hearing they're interested in building cottages and duplexes. So, most of those inquiries are from smaller developers. We are not getting those from like classic builders that used to build homes in Sammamish, like Murray Franklin, Toll Brothers. We are hearing from really small builders, with the exception of the map that you see on my right, which is for 48, I think 50 duplexes, which is from tri-point homes. Besides tri-point, most of the other inquiries that we have gotten are basically for cottage housing. So, that's the trend that we have been seeing so far. And these are at the pre-application stages. We haven't really done any building permits or any other reviews on these. These are just inquiries we are getting so far. So, staff is expecting like over the years, over next couple of months, maybe these will come to fruition, and we will be seeing hopefully more middle housing in the city.
So, one thing we wanted to provide an update on was the affordable housing in Lufi. As part of the comprehensive project plan update that was adopted in 2024, there was a policy directing that we create and incorporate into our development regulations, a inclusionary affordable housing program, where all new housing built in the city is required to include 10% of the units at 80% area median income. In this case, we wanted to take a look at how that might model out with regard to revenue that could then be repurposed for leveraging local share in grant applications and other methods of providing affordable housing. In this case, if we were to build 10 new homes on vacant lots averaging 3,000 square feet, that would be estimated to be a revenue of about $1 million per year. 50 residential additions averaging 650 square feet would be about 1.1 million per year. To date, we have only received an in-lufi charge for, for one new residence at $85,000. So, there hasn't been a lot of activity on this. We are seeing applicants be creative in how they are designing their homes, which is part of the, the purpose of the toolset. And we're seeing homes being designed to incorporate accessory dwelling units, which don't have to pay the fee, and also changing in square footage in order to meet the exemption thresholds. So, that results in smaller units being built, and also incorporating accessory dwelling units into the residence to adjust the amount of square footage that ultimately is being
So, in regards to ADUs, with the 2025 amendment, we've really streamlined the process of getting ADUs permitted, and as an extension, detached accessory dwelling units permitted. With that, the amendments streamlined process as mentioned before, but there are still a couple of challenges, such as dimensional requirements, or homeowners or residents seeking to build more than what an ADU will allow. But with the amendments that have come into play, ADUs have become really attractive as a way to expand a dwelling unit without having to pay, as Dave mentioned, in-lufi. And we expect to see a more ADU permits come in.
Yeah, so for zoning reclassifications, we have also seen uptake similar to middle housing regulations. So, what we see on the map on the screen is, so the properties that are highlighted in green, so these three specific parcels, so these are all zoned R1. So, in order to upzone to the next zone, you have to about basically R4. So, in this case, what we are seeing is Sammamish residents are working together to basically do the rezone as one application, but in order to do that, you have to basically qualify for a rezone by yourself. So, for each of these parcels, could have done separate rezoning applications, because they all about are for parcels. So, if I'm looking at the screen, so they have a parcel to the east, and the parcel to the east that's zoned R4, and the parcels to the south, which are also zoned R4. So, their residents are basically coming together to basically do a one consolidated application to upzone. So, if you look at the map, the area, the parcel that's colored in blue, they are not, they were originally planning to submit a consolidated application with those three parcels in green, but they were unable to do so because they do not qualify for a rezone on itself, because they do not about R4 zones. So, therefore, they were unable to consolidate. So, only three properties qualified. So, there is more of a trend where we are seeing R1-zoned properties are looking to upzone to R4, but we are seeing less of inquiries where R4-zoned properties are planning to upzone to R6. So, it's basically we're seeing parcels that are zoned with lower density, they're looking to upzone to R4, but less of R4 to R6. So, we have only got two applications so far this year, but we're expecting as we progress in the coming months, we might see more applications come in the door.
If I could add one comment on this. So, what's interesting, you know, with the trend we're seeing is that we're seeing individual property owners who are working with their neighbors to do it on their own. In this case, we have these property owners that are interested in creating additional density so that they can have their, their kids move back and create lots where their, their kids can actually have a, a future residence next to theirs. So, there's different purposes that we're seeing. We, we have some builders that have acquired property under contract that are proposing a rezone as well, but I thought this was a really interesting example, and it's a way in which we're seeing longtime residents of the city try to find a way forward to, to provide an opportunity for their children to live, to move back to the city. So, that's one of the purposes and benefits of the rezone process.
So, with the recent bomb cyclone, Sammamish has seen a lot of trees come down in response, whether it be for safety, concerns about disease, whatnot, new things coming to light. So, the diagram on the left shows the typical Sammamish urban forest in comparison to what would be recommended by the DNR. This is just due to legacy homes for, legacy homes in a typical Sammamish urban forest. These homes were built however many years ago before these recommendations came into play, and that causes issues. With our minutes will go, we try to emphasize tree protection to maintain the urban forest, but through that, that causes a bit of conflict on maintaining the urban forest, but making sure that residents are safe and protected and are not at risk. So, we're hoping in the future, the WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface and amendments to code would help alleviate the situation.
Just a little bit more on that, just so you're all aware. The, the Wildland Urban Interface codes were adopted by the Washington State Building Code Council, and was it 23, and they were meant to be implemented in 24. However, the state passed a bill that required that the state revisit the maps that go along with that. There are risk maps that go along with the Wildland Urban Interface code. And if you're in a different risk zone, then the treatments to create a safe zone around your house or defensible space are different, depending on the zone that you're in. And the way in which the maps were created were deemed by the building community to be unpredictable and not really achieve the, the outcome that they were trying to, to achieve. So, the state told the Department of Natural Resources that they need to go back through the process and redesign the maps. So, the state is, is on track with that work. There is a, a appointed working committee that works with DNR staff, where they are going through all the, the various criteria for when a property might be in a, what, what type of zone it's in, what, and what the requirements would be for that property to be defensible. That will ultimately result in an amendment to the Wildland Urban Interface codes, which we will then have to consider. I think those will probably start to, to come to the surface sometime late this fall and into the winter, at which point, we're going to have to consider a building code update, and we will also have to consider the conflict that that presents between the building code and the defensible space, depending on what zone you're in, and our tree protection rules as a city. There is some tension there, because the, as I understand it, the, the more aggressive defensible space zones require quite a bit of clear area around the home, and they limit the amount of shrubs and other vegetation and barks and things that can be used. So, that is, in many times, in conflict with the tree retention requirements and canopy objective that the city has. So, that will be a conversation that we're definitely going to want to engage with the community on and try and find a path forward. And we do have work planned for sometime in '26, an update of the city's tree retention rules. It's a big topic, and we're going to want to see what happens at the state level first with the maps and the state building codes, and then we'll proceed accordingly.
So, with the development regulations that went into effect in January, in response to the middle housing regulations that were adopted, there was a 3,000-square-foot footprint restriction that was put into place. And so, we are seeing building permit applications come in, where unfortunately, the applicants hadn't reached out to the city prior to submitting, and they propose additions to homes where the home is already over 3,000 square feet. There is currently no way to apply for a variance or to allow an exception, and so we've had to let people know, like, so sorry. If you want to do changes to your home, if you already have a 5,800-square-foot footprint, you can modify it, you can move the footprint around, but you can't expand it at all, because you would then be expanding a legal non-conforming situation. So, we've had those conversations with a few residents at this point. So, one idea is to consider a small exception, like a small one-time exception. So, that's something that we're looking at maybe presenting to the council in the future. And so, whether or not it's, it's qualified as something to improve the function of the home, if it's something that's needed to improve a bathroom so it's more accessible, or a, you know, a kitchen to be more open, or whatever, something to that effect. The, the intent, that sort of intent is always like a feel-good intent. It can be difficult to then put on us reviewers to make sure that that intent's being met. This does not prevent anyone from requesting a reasonable accommodation under ADA. So, this is separate and apart. So, if we do have someone with a physical hardship, there are still other means in which we can do reasonable accommodations. Just throwing that out there.
That said, there, there's a wide range. Actually, there's some comments that have come in, that I believe was sent to City Council at sammamish.us, and we've been working with a few property owners and trying to navigate this, and trying to be creative and find ways that meet the objective. And then, remember that the original objective was that, as the state required that we allow middle housing, and where we were considering allowing multiple units on a property under HB 1110, as we're required to do, that we did not want the Balkan scale and the envelope of a building to be so big that it overwhelmed the neighborhood, right? And currently, we can build to 35 feet, 30 feet, 35 feet. Sorry, I can't remember that. And which basically results in, if you were to build a 3,000-square-foot footprint, all things, you know, constant, that you could build about a 9,000-square-foot volume envelope, a box, right, under today's rules. We were concerned then, when we were writing those rules, that if there wasn't a limit on a footprint, that someone could build a, you know, 15,000-square-foot building, 18,000-square-foot building, and that if a builder came in and really wanted to build really large middle housing units, and there wasn't that restriction in place, that we would not have any control over that. So, really, in order to maintain, you know, the, the aesthetic and the architecture of neighborhoods and not let buildings get to be too big, we added that restriction. However, there is a rule under HB 1110, that the rules that apply to middle housing, so duplexes, triplexes, stacked flats, all these different forms of, of middle housing typologies, cannot be more restrictive than what applies to single-family. So, what that means is that what, what's good for single-family is good for middle housing. So, we had to be really careful when we were designing our zoning controls, so that although it might be restrictive to single-family, it also is being, taking the precautionary approach, that we're not going to let middle housing become something that dominates our neighborhoods. So, however, you're seeing that the, the downfall, the fallout from that, so to speak, and that we're, we're seeing the need to allow for some, you know, you have an older home, and you want to connect the living room to the kitchen, and you need to knock down a wall. In order to do that, you need to bump out the wall, you don't have any square footage available to do that. You want to put, you want to age in place and be proactive, you want to put an elevator in, you can't do that. You want to put a ramp in early, maybe you don't qualify for a reasonable exception, reasonable accommodation, but you want to go ahead and make that change early so that you can age in place. Can't do that, because you don't have any square footage left in your footprint. So, these are some of the things we're dealing with. We're going to come back with some proposed code amendments for you all, run it through the planning commission, and, and hopefully find a solution that is going to be difficult to administer, but will help Sammamish residents get what they need.
So, with all of this, we do have, this is not a fully inclusive list of cleanup items that we want to do with the next round of code updates. The code will never be perfect, the code will always need improvements. Keeps us in business. So, so these are just a, a list of, of things we want to do changes to. I'm not going to read this to you. So, but if you had questions, we can go over that at the end.
We also wanted to provide an update on the city's efforts to update impact fees. Recall that with a recent bill passed, can't remember the name of the bill, the number of the bill, the city is required to update its impact fees to reflect different unit sizes. That could be done by bedroom number, it could be done by square footage. The idea there is that smaller units are, should be, should be allowed to pay a smaller impact fee than a bigger unit. So, we are in the process of updating So we are in the process of updating our impact fees. We had the first meeting with the Planning Commission back in July. We have, the next meeting is actually tomorrow night, and we'll be talking about the formula and how we're looking at breaking out the gradation of the fee schedule, which accounts for square footage. These are the current impact fees that are listed here that are in place for 2025. Any impact fees that we change, the earliest they would be effective would be in 2026, maybe later in the year as we continue to work on that project. Just a reminder that we are also working on updating the school impact fees, which we do annually. That work will come to you in November, where we will take the each school district's capital facilities plan, apply the city's codified formula, and we'll propose that the council adopt by reference the capital facilities plan and adopt the update to the fee schedule to incorporate the school impact fee into the fee schedule. So that's coming later this year. So we also wanted to talk a little bit about some of our challenges and opportunities. As Avril mentioned, we are a pretty lean staff group. We do have some backup systems in place should we have staff departures or should we have staff out on extended leave. We do have staff that at times have changes in their family and take extended periods of leave. We do have staff that serve in the military and are on extended military leave. These things come when they come, and we have to deal with them. We don't have the opportunity to hire extra staff. However, we do have a consultant contract that we use where we bring in an on-call consultant to help bridge the gap. However, it is a reminder that although we try to be as responsive as we can to permit applications, that we have a published timeline, and we really work within that timeline to review permits as quickly as we can. We're not waiting till the last minute to review them, but at times, we do have many other projects in review. So if an applicant makes application, it doesn't mean that we're immediately going to get to it. It might take a few days and in some cases, weeks to get to it, depending on how busy we are and what our staffing looks like at that point in time. Another opportunity is to enhance internal coordination between different work groups. As we update our zoning controls and our comp plan, we also then end up taking on updates to things like the public work standards. Sometimes a standard or code might fall behind another code as we're updating things on state-mandated cycles. So that does present a challenge at times as working between those groups and those different generations of codes and standards. So we're working to enhance that. It's constant communication between groups. We also have opportunity, as you saw the list of potential code amendments, to take on code updates, to reflect things that we see in the community are needed when development standards are in conflict or misaligned. That does happen. We try to get it right the first time, doesn't always happen, so we sometimes end up bringing code amendments back. Technology is also a challenge. For some reason, in the government realm, the software that's available is not quite as good as what you might find in the private realm. So we're left with some of the vendors that we have that seem like the products are a bit outdated on the shelf, that really could use a refresh. And we have not such great customer service sometimes from those vendors. It is challenging. So sometimes our permitting is delayed because of the software options that we have to run our permit system. I do know that the state is working on ways to improve that. There's a movement afoot to try and create a statewide permit software system. We have our doubts, but it is a good idea, and if it could be executed properly, could make things a lot easier for residents and builders.
Thank you very much for this presentation. And council, I'm looking to you to see if you have questions. I'm sure you do. Councilmember Stewart.
Great. Thank you, guys. That is great. And I'm so excited that we have so many people here because this is one of those topics that mostly only excites people who are nerdy like all of us here, but it's a really important topic. So I'm glad that there are lots of people here to hear about it. Couple of questions as you went through it, just trying to think of questions that might pop up from the audience. You mentioned early on that we're seeing more interest from the development community around middle housing, and we're seeing more smaller builders than larger builders. Do we have any information as to why we're seeing that shift?
Well, I could speak a little bit. I think it just depends on the type of product developers usually, like, they build usually on the market. So like, for example, for Mary Franklin, they usually build larger homes, like Toll Brothers' larger homes. Like, that's been the trend in the community. So I think as we progress over the years, maybe they will build smaller products. I think it just depends what type of product that they're used to selling. So I think that's what we are seeing from them. But maybe, I think, smaller developments, like, maybe, I think, building smaller units is what they are good at. So it all depends on the product that the developers build. Maybe David can chime into that a little bit more.
Yeah, a lot of it has to do, from what I understand, with the inputs that go into a project and whether or not, at the end of the day, it is profitable for a developer, right? It's a business, and it's what level of risk and what level of profit that they're willing to accept. Typically, the higher the risk, the higher the profit expectation is. So builders are adjusting now, land economics are adjusting. They're probing our rules to try and understand where the opportunities are. Each community has a slightly different set of middle housing rules. We are working with master builders to help them understand and navigate our new middle housing regulations. We also don't have a lot of meaningful assemblages of land, so we're left with smaller projects. Bigger builders, bigger commercial builders are not really in, you know, set up to build a small three-unit triplex on a single lot. That's just not what they do. So we're left with the smaller builders that do, typically do good work, however, they're trying to see if their projects will actually financially pencil out in the city.
So do you think it's in part or in large part because of the change in our rules? So we are trying to create rules that make it more beneficial, not just to our community, but to, well, not more beneficial, but to incentivize, if you will, or drive people to building the smaller houses? Or is it just the macroeconomic scenario?
I think it's both. I think it really is that once builders realize that they can make the profit margin that they want to make off of it, when the inputs equal what they need to make, they will move forward with it.
Right. So we're kind of showing that it's not profitable anymore to build McMansions, nor is it good for the environment, so, and it's not what we need as a community, so.
We are still seeing some builders move forward. We do have one subdivision that is under review, one of the subdivisions that was listed in the presentation, that is proposed by a larger builder, where they're proposing to build fairly large, single-family homes. Now, there is a need in Sammamish. We have more people per household typically than most cities do. So larger units do play a role in the city. However, we do also understand, as part of the work we did with our comprehensive plan and the housing plan that's part of that, that there is a strong need in Sammamish for a different, more, a smaller unit type that could serve a different interest, and even a family, right? You know, the three-bedroom, smaller unit. I think the switch that we made from 1,000 square feet to 1,500 square feet for the Fee and Lue exemption really piqued the interest of builders. They would love to see it at 1,750. They feel like that's the sweet spot, but they can fit a three-bedroom, two-bath unit into a 1,500-square-foot footprint, or, excuse me, a floor plan.
Okay, great. And then we talked too about the Fee and Lue. And I just, I want to, part of the reason why I'm probing into this is because there have been a lot of questions, or at least I've received a lot of questions from the community and seen a lot of questions around, like, why do our policies, why isn't it just the comp plan? Why do we have to look at updating other policies and other things? And I think this is what we're seeing, right? Is that by adjusting, as you talked a lot about, the levers, and again, these aren't just coming, correct me if I'm wrong, but these levers that you guys investigated as part of our policies have come from many years of study, right? We've done multiple rounds through our Planning Commission, right around housing studies and what the community needs and how to get that diversified housing stock for, again, not just for looking at our growth targets, but for the needs internally for the residents who are already here and what we're hearing from the community. Is that accurate? Because I know people think we haven't done any housing studies, and I wanted to be able to share with them that we do have housing studies out there and that that's what's informing these. Are those easily available somewhere, David, that we could point people to those?
Yeah, so the housing studies over the years, there was a housing study that was done as part of what's called Sammamish Homegrown some number of years ago, right? And that's a plan that did not move forward. There was then a housing action plan, a housing diversification toolkit, that did move forward. And it was more focused on what are the things as a city that we need to do to start to deliver these different housing types, right? And that really fed into the comprehensive plan, housing element, and helped inform a lot of our code changes that were made. The city also is in Arch Regional Coalition for Housing Partner City, and Arch does a lot of the support work for the city on housing and housing studies. The affordable housing, the inclusionary affordable housing requirements were largely supported by Arch. And the fee schedule or the fee structure, if you will, around that for single units or smaller projects that resulted in fractional units was something that was provided by Arch. So all of that information, you know, is included as part of the comprehensive plan, and it is in the, I want to say, the Volume Two, which is the background information related to housing. We did include as part of the packets earlier this year, when the resolutions on affordable housing were passed, the first, setting up the program, and second, amending the fee schedule, that all of that information was included with those packets for those meeting nights and, you know, is readily available.
And do you have any feedback around the Fee and Lue? Like, again, the Fee and Lue is there to try to encourage affordable housing via smaller units. You said that so far this year, we've only had one resident that had to pay a Fee and Lue. So do we believe that it's deterring development altogether? Do we think that it's encouraging smaller? Do we think it's a combination of both?
I think it's a combination of both. So we have had people that, when they learned of the fee, walk away from their project. Want to be honest about that. That the fee does also impact individual homeowners when they're wanting to do an addition, that the, you know, the per-square-foot fee multiplied out by a square-foot addition that you're doing, if the home is in excess of 1,500 square feet, it's an additional cost when you're trying to build, you know, budget for your home addition, right? I want, that is a true fact.
Yep. And again, though, right, wasn't that part of the balance that we talked about? Because one of the questions we get from the community is, how are we stopping development in other places if we're looking at trying to build more affordable housing through multifamily? And isn't this part of that, is to say, hey, if people are going to build, we want it to be affordable, and this is how we kind of strike that balance, so we don't get all building everywhere all the time, right?
It's, well, it's a complete toolset that we're looking at. It's not just the fee itself. It's also adding flexibility with the number of units you can build through middle housing, whether you could build a, instead of building a traditional, single-family home, you could build a duplex now. If you design your duplex to operate as a single-family home, but it's also forward-compatible in the future to be converted to a duplex, and you've designed it, most people that we see are building new, single-family homes generally are including some form of a second kitchen, whether it's a bar or whether it's a media room that includes a kitchen. We are seeing most new homes that come in have wiring and plumbing for a second kitchen.
Right. So this is how we get through what we call attached ADUs, right? And again, to encourage that ability to either have multi-generational or have multiple units, your kids, however you want to look at that, right? And, I mean, I just, I'm sharing that and asking those questions because I want people to know that we've looked at this with a lot of intention to get the desired outcomes and that this isn't just random and it isn't with one aim in mind, but it's to get this set of affordable housing, to make sure we don't have rampant development everywhere. Like, you talked about the square footage limitation so that we heard a lot from people about protecting character of communities. And we know that, as you talked about some of these re-zones, that redevelopment is a natural occurrence in cities. And so how do we look forward and say, hey, we know that this is going to come? How do we make sure that we're driving the outcomes that we're hearing from the community that they want, which is to make sure that we don't see some big giant 5,000-square-foot box pop up next to their house, but still be able to ensure we're getting affordable housing and get, you know, meeting the mandates that we have and meeting the needs that we're hearing internally from our community. So I just want people to be aware of that because I know that it feels like we haven't done all of that, and it might just be that you haven't had the pleasure of sitting through the many hours of meetings that we have. So, and then the last one, you talked a little bit about this, about how people can meet these ADU requirements. So even with the Fee and Lue of, they can still find ways to potentially not have to pay that fee by designing their homes in a way that will create today or tomorrow affordable units. And then one thing I just wanted to touch on, to reemphasize around the, you talked about the urban forest management. And again, it's a balancing act, right? We have to look at the public safety as well as protecting our urban forests. You talked about looking at potentially changing some regulations, and you're just getting started on that. But you talked about that urban, that interface, sorry, I always get that wrong. What is it? The Wildlife, the WUI, the Wildlife, Wildland Urban Interface. That is not the entirety of our city, correct? There are only parts of our city that would qualify as that. Is that correct?
We'll have to wait and see the maps.
The new maps, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then, again, when we talk about urban forests, we're obviously concerned about our trees, but aren't urban forests more than just the trees? Like, isn't the urban forest, we talk about all of the growth that we're looking at?
Well, for a healthy forest, you would need the middle story and understory as well. You would also need to understand what the life cycle of that forest is. Is it, what stage of succession is it in? Is it, you know, a growing, new, evolving forest? Or is it, has it reached what's called climax succession, where basically you have those peak succession trees that have established? It really depends. There's such a wide array of possibilities with an urban forest. You know, there, you know, one of the challenges that we see and the staff see on a regular basis is homeowners who are really wanting to protect all of their trees, but at the same time are terrified of their trees.
Right.
And it's a real thing, and we have people in tears, you know, that are wanting to keep their tree, but at the same time needing to cut it down. So that, for us, is difficult to navigate. Where we also have challenges where you're allowed to remove a certain number of trees on your property, and based on the tree rules that were put in place in 2014, and if you can't exceed that number. And there are people who maybe want to develop their property who come in with hazard tree rule or hazard tree forms that are questionable, and then we have a third party review them, and the third party does their job and asks a bunch of questions about whether or not the trees are actually hazardous, and that creates some tension as well. So trees in general are one of the more challenging topics that we deal with on a day-to-day basis.
But the updates that you guys are looking to do is not being driven by development or to satisfy development. It's being driven by the public safety, by the Department of Natural Resources, and by our own fire services who are saying, hey, we need to relook at this because there are suggestions and recommendations on how people should protect their homes. So I just want to make that clear. We're not looking at this to make it easier for developers. We're looking at this from a public safety perspective.
And, you know, to anybody listening, I'll say that Eastside Fire and Rescue does offer a free property consultation where you can have them out to your property, and they will assess the risk of your property. And they'll go through a checklist they have that includes, you know, interior things like curtains near windows, you know, all the way through vegetation surrounding your property, and they'll make recommendations on things you can do to make changes that will help with, be more resilient in the case of a wildfire.
Excellent. And we do have a wonderful fire service, if I can give a shout-out to them. So if you go to their website, you can find their, how you can request one of those free assessments. All right, thank you very much.
Who's next? Deputy Mary Lamb.
Thank you, David. I have a few comments, really. It's good to see the middle housing bill having its intended effect. And...
Thank you, David. I have a few comments, really. It's good to see the middle housing bill having its intended effect and it helping us achieve our goals of getting more diverse housing. We don't have many duplexes in our city, do we?
We have a few and we've seen some, not a lot. We've seen some come in for remodels, that's how I know, where they've wanted to do additions on them, but they, the addition would exceed the Florida area ratios, so we've had some challenges with them. But no, it's a very small percentage of the city's housing stock.
Yeah, so it's good to see what you were just showing, there's 25 coming in. I was a little surprised to see that there wasn't the interest in the triplexes and the fourplexes simply because if there, if there are companies that are building the larger homes, like, one would think that the triplexes and the fourplexes would fit pretty easily into their, like, models.
I think it's their marketability, who their clientele are, you know, who they typically sell homes to. The duplexes tend to pencil better, they tend to be more feasible. Duplexes are basically like two, single-family homes, you know, pegged together. When you get into the triplex realm, then you're looking at, you know, it's more complicated to design it when you have somebody who lives on both sides of you. Maybe it's not as marketable, so, you know, everyone wants the side unit, they don't necessarily want to live in the middle. So it is more complicated. We've seen developers more interested in cottages than in triplexes. And I think that plays out the same way is that you don't have, you're not living between two units, you're, you have your own four walls, so to speak. So we think that there's a more opportunity in Sammamish for cottages likely right now than there is for triplexes or stacked flats or walk-up apartments as, in terms of middle housing typologies.
Cottages are also great. It's good to see that we'll be revisiting the development regulations and the affordable housing fee, especially with the Affordable Housing Fee program. It's such a new program and I've been hearing things much like Councilmember Stewart from residents that aren't happy with how their situation, how it's not working for their situation. And I want everybody to understand that this is a new program for us, like, we haven't done this before. And it's hard to get it right the first time and we can't think of every case scenario where, across the board, it's going to work for everybody. So we do appreciate that people are coming forward and letting us know where it doesn't work and staff will work with people and, on a case-by-case basis, to make it work. And I appreciate staff because you guys have a lean team, that's just more work for you. But I also understand that, you know, we do really want to collaborate with our residents on making their projects work. Thank you.
I have a few questions if, does Sid have a question? I can't tell. Did you raise your hand, Sid? Okay, now I know you have a question. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for the presentation. I just had one quick question about the rezon process. In the diagram you showed, there were the three parcels that were working together that did abut R4. There's the one parcel in blue that did not abut R4. So if and when those three parcels that were eligible are potentially upzoned to R4, does that mean at some point in the future that blue parcel would then be able to apply because it would, it would meet the requirement of abutting an R4 parcel? And if so, what is the time scale on that? Do those properties have to be built before they could then apply?
Yeah, so the parcel that was up above, it could upzone to R4 if the bottom three parcels are R4. But in order to upzone that specific parcel, 50% of the area has to be unencumbered by critical areas. So let's say if there are critical areas on that parcel, that encumbers pretty much half the property, they would not be eligible for a rezon even if they abut the R4 zoned, new properties to be zoned R4 at the bottom, so.
And just to clarify, the rezonings, as soon as they become effective, that adjacent property could the next day submit their application because they're now adjacent to R4?
Great, thank you very much.
So if there's, I'm going to start asking some questions unless others have questions. Could I just understand for the slide on middle housing where you showed the two plots, is the, it's actually on Slide 5, the, or at least on my version. The units there, that's a real active development, correct? Are these townhomes? What are these? And how big are they?
Yeah, so right now, I think they're just in pre-application stages.
Okay, so we don't really know.
So they haven't basically submitted official project application, it's basically conceptual, pre-app stage. So I think the one with 50 units was a, I believe they were planning to do duplexes, where
Duplexes, okay.
Other one was basically, I believe they were cottages.
Okay, yeah, they look, okay, it's hard to tell, but just by looking at it. Yeah, I was trying to understand if these were going to be, you know, like, under 1,500 square feet too or, or not? So I was just curious about that.
Can I add one thing to that?
Yeah.
So one of the comments that you did receive also by email that I was caught, was CC'd on, was from a Sammamish community member who indicated that the, that this, you know, that, so there's a couple of different ways. So say you're in R4 today, right?
Yeah.
You could come in and build up to R12 density based on middle housing. So if you're building middle housing typologies, you could build up to R12 density. There's a whole host of limitations on that. Footprint size, Florida area ratios, envelope limits. Basically, it's driving at smaller units. However, the question on ownership is what comes up, and this is one of our most frequent questions, is what are the different options for ownership? So somebody who, say, just to make it easy, had an acre that was square and flat in the R1, or excuse me, R4, and they wanted to come in and build 12 units, so maybe three triplexes. They would first have to go through the process of, they could either build them and own them themselves, right, and rent them, just as one, as kind of like a business venture. The next option is that you could, you could build them and then condominiumize them and sell them as condominiums. Under, under state law, we have to allow that. The next option would be is that you could subdivide the property into the four lots that the base zoning allows, and then you could build three units on each lot. Remember, it starts at R4, you got one acre, you could build, you get four lots under the base zoning. Then you could build three units on each lot because you're allowed three units per lot, which gets you to R12. Or if you wanted to go straight to the end, you could submit for a subdivision to do a unit-lot division, which would then create 12 units, 12 lots. And then you could build, basically, the, you get the zero-lot line buildings, which are the triplex, right, the common walls. And you own the land underneath. So you would do fee simple, zero-lot line, triplexes through a unit-lot division. The challenge there is that the process to do a formal subdivision, because now you're creating 12 lots, is very different than the process to do a short subdivision. So what the commenter was saying is that we should rethink that and if we really want to be serious about middle housing in the city, we should streamline that. I did want to highlight that comment. Now, there's, there's a flip side to that, that there's a purpose for a subdivision process, that it includes notification, opportunity for community members to get involved, a hearing, all of those things which are beneficial to the community to be engaged. So it really just depends on what the city's objectives are and, you know, whatever direction we take, we'll, we'll deliver a code that streamlines that. If that's what you want, we can maintain the subdivision process if that's what you want. It just takes a little longer and there's more resources that go into getting those 12 units or those 12 lots at the end.
I see. Thanks for going through that, I appreciate that. And thank you for responding to that particular comment. The other question I had had to do with ADUs. I would love to see, of course, more applications for ADUs. When Councilmember Gupta and I were out talking to residents, there was one resident in particular that offered the idea that, could you please do an information night where we invite the public in to how to do an ADU, how to get it permitted, what's the correct process, what's the easier way to do it? In this particular case, he's challenged because of the sewer connections, because he's on septic. So that's an automatic problem. However, I would love to invite the Water District to participate and to help, help solve for some of this, too.
I think that's a great idea and we could also record it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And have that available for somebody to watch as a guide later down the line. I, I do want to highlight, Avril's going to talk about this in just a second, but I do want to highlight that with regard to sewer, there are some lots in the city that are not eligible. Generally speaking, sewer isn't always an obstacle, that there are different types of septic systems that the Seattle-Kin County Public Health allows now. They have really changed how they, how we design and allow septic systems. They're far more, I would say environmentally friendly than they used to be. And in many cases, there's an argument to be made that it's more energy efficient than sewer. Just depends on the location of the property. Now, there are also a lot of different options regarding grinder pumps and connections, you know, forced connections to gravity sewers. So it isn't always as expensive as digging, you know, a 20-foot-deep trench to put a gravity sewer in when you could put in, you know, a forced gravity, a forced grinder pump setup. And we do have a lot of those and there's a lot of them on the Eastlake-Sam Parkway and there are others in different parts of the city as well. So I think Avril was going to talk a little bit about our webpage on ADUs.
Shameless plug. So on the main city's webpage, if you go to City Departments and you go to the best department, Community Development, there's a column on the left and then you can see breakdowns of various webpages under Community Development. We have one specifically for housing, created by yours truly. If it needs improvements, please tell me. Under Housing, we have a page dedicated to affordable housing regulations with additional links to the Affordable Housing Regulations background and it's a whole table of links to the council agendas and meetings where all of those things were discussed. So it's a great little resource that we direct people to regularly. We have one on middle housing, then we have another one on ADUs. And so we tried to put in all the, the questions that we get asked consolidated into one page, so development regulations, you know, attached versus detached, sizes. We tried to make it condensed so that it's like an easier bite of information. So we do have that online. So we direct people to these webpages all day long, every day, and you are welcome to do so as well.
I think that's going to be a really helpful resource and I do love the idea of, of having an information meeting to, that gets recorded and we hopefully, you know, answer a lot of questions that way. The next thing I wanted to ask about or just make a comment on has to do with this slide about the typical urban, it's Sammamish urban forests and trees, which is the Slide 9. Just Councilmember Stewart and I are both on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board and when you look at the house on the right, you just know it's a safer house. So, and that the EFOR people would appreciate that a lot. So it is going to be a challenge to try to figure out how to do the balance, but it's a balance. And I think we all appreciate that. I think the other part, too, that I wanted to mention is that we all understand, too, the unintended consequences part. Now that we've been in this for a while with some of these recent updates and changes, I think we're beginning to understand what these unintended consequences are starting to look like. My question, Avril, has to do with, you made a comment, I think, I just didn't quite catch it. It was about having to do with being able to do, like, ADA types of enhancements. It sounded like there was a requirement that you have to meet to do it or you can't anticipate it?
So under ADA, cities, I kind of wish I had the city attorney here to catch me if I'm misspeaking. All cities and jurisdictions are required to have some sort of reasonable accommodation. So if someone has
Reasonable accommodation, but is there a definition of reasonable accommodation?
I am like 98% certain that there is and that it's regulated under ADA.
Okay, because part of what I'm thinking of is a, is a email that we got from a resident saying, but I'm anticipating having a lot of problems. I'm trying to figure out how to make my house that's multi-level into one level.
Right.
And be within the guidelines.
We, my understanding in, in working through these is that it's got to be something present or unless it's like
Eminent.
If, like, if someone had a condition where I, in the next month or months, I am going to be wheelchair-bound.
Disabled somehow.
I am going to be, and it's imminent, but if it's, like, I'm 46 right now, I live in a three-story house, townhouse, I'm not going to put in an elevator at the moment because I might need one in 30 years.
I see what, I see what you're saying. I think, you go right ahead, David, I'm just going to talk about the fact that I would like that, part of that unintended consequence. I'm trying to figure out, how do we keep people in their homes?
Right. And that's, that's, I think, where the challenge is and then the staff get, get put, you know, under a lot of pressure to approve something, but then we also understand that we're trying to apply the rules that the community really wanted us to
Equally and fairly.
To apply. A classic one that we hear is that, well, my nephew visits us regularly and, not, I mean, just saying, it's a, for example, like, you know, and, and he has a, he has a certain handicap and we need to, you know, make, make provision for that. And I feel for them, however, when you've already, you're already in exceedance of what the code allows, should you then be given a, some form of a reasonable accommodation? And that's, that's a question, that's a policy question. I don't want to answer that one, right? That's one I feel like we need help with.
Well, and I think that that is, we own a lot of that, so, is what I think. So I, I am going to be looking for, how do we create the right kind of, I don't like variance per se, but adjustment that we need to make that is enforceable, that is fair, that is equitable, that is understandable and relatable. But if you drew a picture of it, people could look at it and go, I understand what you're saying. It's very clear instead of ambiguous. So that's going to be part, but I think it's work that we really, really need to grapple with because it's happening now. It's also something that we can't wait on too long because people are in the throes of it right now.
And we, so if you recall, we do have a, a open code amendment docket that is set for implementation of the development regulations for the comprehensive plan. And we did go through Phase One earlier this year. We are spooling up Phase Two based on what we've learned from community members and the feedback that we've received and we will be taking that to Planning Commission later this fall and that should be landing here, hopefully, late November, December. It could be January, it really just depends on how that plays out.
Okay, that's very helpful. Counselor, are there follow-up questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You always ask great questions and then I, and then I think of others. So one of the things, David, when you were talking about the, the middle housing and how people can take their R4 and turn it into R12, you talked a little bit, but I think you need to talk a little bit more about all, like, some of those restrictions because I don't want people to walk away thinking that, like, every R4 in the city is going to turn into an R12 tomorrow. Because in addition to things like we heard about, you know, critical areas, aren't most of our neighborhoods under HOA guidelines and aren't most of our HOAs prohibiting this and the state law upholds those HOA restrictions, correct?
That's correct. And those that we sampled, we did find in their community covenants that there was a restriction on future development to only allow single-family homes.
Right. So while we're, again, striking the balance between how do we get the smaller houses, how do we get the affordable houses, we don't want people to think that, as, as I saw one post, that we're going to see all of the communities suddenly explode because of the middle housing bill. So most of our, most of the city is under HOA restrictions and those HOA restrictions generally, if not always, have those single-family restrictions. So the, the middle housing to allow the art, you know, building three lot, or three units on a, on a single lot like that are, are few and far between in our city, which is why we have to look for other ways to get the affordable housing.
I would also add to that, that you cannot build more with middle housing with three units on a single lot than you could with just a plain, single-family home. And that is part of the point of our regulations was we really tried to be careful to not let middle housing really result in bulk and scale or development outcomes that are different than what you would see through just somebody building a single-family home on that property.
Yeah, and I did want to echo the mayor's concerns. I do think looking at ADA accommodations in some of these restrictions is really important and we may be able to explore the idea, just like we have with some of our environmental stuff, that you could put those exceptions on the title. So we can allow the accommodation for ADA purposes and that what, what's So we can allow the accommodation for ADA purposes in that, what gets approved in the permit, and that's what would get built, but if you put that on the title, then it also prevents somebody, you know, later coming along and ripping out the ramp and putting in, you know, walls or whatever. So I think there are definitely ways that we can make accommodations to, again, care for our residents, but not create some loophole where people go and take advantage of it. So I look forward to working on that as well. Thanks so much.
Well, thanks very much. Thanks, Avril Quentin, and yes, for, I'm sorry, I'm pronouncing your name wrong, probably. Can you help me?
It's Jasbeer.
Jasbeer. Okay. That was better. It wasn't perfect, but it was better. I work on continual process improvement, so thanks very much. And next up, we have for discussion, pre-release informational meeting on the final supplemental environmental impact statement, and we have David Pyle and Jeff Arango.
We also have Matt Campbell--
Hi.
--from Framework.
Just a second. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel David Pyle, Department of Community Development. And just to restate for the record, I have with me this evening Jeff Arango from Framework and Matt Campbell from Framework. They are the lead consultants on the work that we are doing to update and amend the city's Town Center Subarea Plan. We have a presentation for you this evening. Happy to field comments and questions at that point after we've made our way through the slides. We're going to do a bit of a team effort here and work our way through the slides. We're going to primarily talk a bit about the process and how we got here. We want to make sure everyone's aware sort of of the background of this and the planning framework that we're in. You know, we've heard a lot of different perspectives on why the city might be taking on this work. We'll talk about the final SEIS, what the process is from here out, and what the next steps are for the plan amendment and code amendment work that will continue into the next year and hopefully wrap up sometime in the middle of summer next year. So just a real high level, how did we get here? We all know that we have heard a lot about, and we all know and have heard a lot about the housing crisis that we're in. We have had, as a city, a lack of development in the existing Town Center Subarea. Across the city, a lack of diversity in housing being built. We've had a lack of affordability in housing being built. There has been an ongoing state and regional emphasis on housing, you might say national emphasis on housing. We recently updated the city's comprehensive plan. Within the comprehensive plan, there is a focus on future growth in the city and centers. We did understand, as part of the process, that there's not a lot of land left available out in the neighborhoods, and we also, at the same time, are not interested in seeing real high-density and low-rise and mid-rise building typologies being built in the neighborhoods. Middle housing is about as far as we want to go, so we really want to focus on our future growth in centers. That's a theme around the region, and it's something that we also see in some of the state information, PSRC information, et cetera. And it's a logical place to start with the existing 2008 Town Center Subarea Plan. We already have a subarea plan in place. We know that we're not getting the type of development that we want in the Town Center, so why not take it on as the first step in implementation? Just, again, more overview as to how we got where we are. The state legislature basically provides the high-level overview. It goes down to Puget Sound Regional Council, who provides the regional framework. That gets passed down to King County, county-wide planning policies, that provides the county planning framework, which then gets passed down to the city, where we have an adopted vision statement and a new adopted comprehensive plan, which ultimately points us towards development in centers and ultimately towards updating the Town Center Subarea Plan. The state law and legislative priorities are always changing and always being updated, and there's always something new in the past few years coming from the state regarding housing. We are required under HB 1220 and under RCW 3670A070 Sub 2 to produce a housing element as part of our comprehensive plan that indicates how we are going to plan for and accommodate diverse and affordable housing, and it also sets a broader framework for the delivery of that housing, including reporting out to the state and its agency, the Department of Commerce, who has the oversight on this, as to our progress. PSRC's Vision 2050, which is the regional framework for growth, has a strong emphasis on housing. You know, the goal of housing in PSRC's Vision 2050 is, the region preserves, improves, and expands its housing stock to provide a range of affordable, accessible, healthy, and safe housing choices to every resident. The region continues to promote fair and equal access to housing for all people. So again, this is the broader framework that we are planning under as a region. It also aims to address the regional housing crisis. I do want to highlight that within PSRC's Vision 2050, that we are in the cities and towns category, and we're in there for a reason, due to our limitations that we have on transportation infrastructure, some of the challenges we've had there in the past, and really want to highlight that we, as a city, are working on planning for the future and trying to understand how and what improvements are needed and how we can better serve the community with regard to transportation. We now have a transportation master plan. We've got a transit master plan. We're working on a ped bike plan, I think, is what it's called, and we're really trying to understand how to move people around in a more efficient way. King County Countywide Planning Policies, this is where it really gets broken down and the direction really hits the ground, so to speak. This is where the county establishes our growth target and where we also are given a housing allocation. Those are different numbers. I'll get to that here in a little bit, but really, we are, as a city, required to demonstrate consistency with King County Countywide Planning Policies. Next, we get down to the community vision, the Mamish community vision that was adopted by the council after community outreach and background work in 2023. And this vision statement specifically calls out for providing a variety of housing choices that support a wide array of lifestyles and also building a thriving Town Center and mixed-use districts. This is passed down, then, to the city's comprehensive plan, where we really look to grow in the future in centers, and this is a consistent theme that you will see through the comp plan. The comp plan also provides a vision and implementation plan for growth in the city, and it navigates intertwined topics of capacity, growth targets, and housing allocation. I'll get to that again in a minute. So what, I wanted to take a minute because this is something that I feel like is often misunderstood in the community and amongst staff, possibly amongst council members, amongst planning commissioners, and just take a minute and talk a little bit about some important vocabulary. The first of these is land capacity. Land capacity, this is the growth that can be accommodated based on zoning of the land and adjusted to reflect a market factor. For Mamish, this is calculated based on a formula and process set by the Washington State, by Washington State, Puget Sound Regional Council, and King County. This is a very cumbersome process and was last completed in 2021, leading up to the comprehensive plan. The land capacity analysis for the region was published in the King County Countywide Planning Policies as part of the publication that was done in 2023. And amendments to the Town Center Plan are really focused on increasing capacity in the Town Center to better attract and develop desired housing types, where these types are currently allowed, yet are deemed infeasible to market builders. The next topic is growth targets. These are negotiated through a regional process and established within King County Countywide Planning Policies. Mamish was assigned a 2,100-unit growth target for the planning timeframe of 2024 through 2044, so 20 years. This number is a benchmark to be used to plan for the delivery of infrastructure and services during this planning timeframe. This is not a ceiling, and it is not a floor, and it is not a requirement to build 2,100 units. It is simply an estimate of anticipated growth during a specified timeframe to be used to design services and infrastructure. If growth happens more slowly, or if growth happens faster than anticipated, there are mechanisms to address that, and it is not uncommon. To be sure, this does not mean development is halted when we reach 2,100 units. Changes to capacity in the Town Center does not result in change to the city's growth target. Rather, it's about making land economics make sense in a way that supports the diverse and affordable housing types envisioned in the city's adopted community vision and 2024 comprehensive plan. The next of these is the housing allocation. I think this is the one where people get most confused. This is required by state law and calculated by King County through an established formula. I do want to point out that back in 2022, when the King County Growth Management Planning Council, Affordable Housing Committee, was considering housing allocations, they were looking at three different methodologies by which they would assign allocations to cities in the county. One of those methodologies included pegging it or making it the same as your growth target. So the county chose to use that methodology. There were other methodologies considered that would have resulted in a number that is different than a growth target. Now, this does not mean that, under your housing allocation, if your growth target includes a majority of units in the deeper affordability, that you have to build all of your units as affordable. What it means is that you really need to show that you have the capacity in the city to build those units. Now, in the case of deeper affordability, it's important that we consider low-rise and mid-rise, because those are the building typologies that generally are seen to provide that level of affordability. So what we look for is, where in the city do we have capacity to build low-rise and mid-rise development in the centers? First place to look, Town Center. And finally, I think one of the most important ones is implementation. Implementation is achieved through geographically-specific subarea planning. While the city may have demonstrated adequate capacity for mixed-use, mid-rise, and low-rise construction types with our 2024 comprehensive plan, e.g., we are in compliance from a planning perspective in paper, that, and we have addressed core requirements of our housing allocation, the city is technically compliant from a planning perspective. However, if the city is to achieve the goals stated in the adopted vision statement and certified, award-winning 2024 comprehensive plan, then further change is needed to actualize the stated objectives. As it stands, although we have capacity to accommodate our housing allocation, it will not be accomplished without partnership with the building industry. To achieve our housing goals and to earnestly work towards fulfilling our housing allocation means making projects that deliver different forms of housing possible for market builders. In this sense, although not technically required under state, regional, and county laws, policies, and directives, to actually make a difference and address our housing imbalance requires implementation through practical measures such as subarea planning. It requires densities adequate to make development happen, and with the construction types proven to deliver different housing options and levels of affordability. Mamish is navigating growth in alignment with broader state, regional, and county mandates. Meeting our targets in a meaningful way, however, will require not just compliance, but intentional proactive implementation that enables real housing diversity and affordability to take shape in our community. Now, speaking a little bit more about the comprehensive plan, some of the comments we received during the DEIS were related to the number of jobs in the city. I do want to highlight that from the U.S. Census Bureau information, that in 2020, about 6,000 workers commuted into the city daily for work. The cost of housing in Mamish and on the east side results in workers having to commute significant distances. Just as an example, many of the jobs in the city fall within the 40% to 60% AMI range. There is a need for local housing to support the city's workforce. One of the things we hear regularly from some of our service providers is that there are teachers arriving late to work because they couldn't get here because they had to commute a great distance, or something happened in their family and they're not close enough to get home quickly. We hear from the water and sewer provider that they need engineers on call 24 hours a day, and they have to actually pay for their housing here in the city when they're on call. We have snow removal crews that we want here when the snow falls and to be able to drive snow plows around the city. We want, we have grocery store workers that we want to be here when snow falls to open up the grocery stores. So we're looking at the different types of jobs that exist in the city and the opportunities for their housing, and really, we don't have much in the way of opportunity for them to work here, or, excuse me, to live here when they work here. Now, going back to a comment that I made previously about the importance and purpose of low-rise multifamily and mid-rise multifamily, that based on state housing guidance from their research that they have done on housing, in a higher-cost community, low-rise and mid-rise multifamily are the only housing typologies or building typologies that actually can deliver housing types in the 0% to 80% AMI range. So this is where the state, PSRC, and the county are looking for cities like Mamish to increase the capacity and opportunity for these types of housing to be built in the cities. This was, I also wanted to highlight that the Town Center update was added as part of the city council's 2025-2026 work plan. You can see here clearly that a definition of success under housing is encourage and incentivize diverse housing types and track success. Another one is to update and operationalize the Town Center Plan. So when staff are working on this, it is because it was assigned to us as a work plan item, and we are working to implement our comprehensive plan and doing the best we can to meet the objectives that were set for us and the work plan that was put in front of us. Again, how did we get here? I went through Washington State Legislature and their role, and RCW 3670A, Puget Sound Regional Council's role in the regional planning context, county-wide planning policies and their purpose, the city's community vision and how it envisions the Town Center fitting into the future of the city, the comprehensive plan and the direction that it gives in order that we focus on planning for future growth in centers. And finally, that leads us to the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, which is the 2008 adopted City Town Center Subarea Plan and the Town Center Subarea Planning Process. And I'm going to pass it off to Jeff, if you want to talk a little bit about the Town Center Planning Process. Is that?
I think--
Okay, I'm going to go through this one.
Yeah. I was going to start the AS.
Okay, got it. No, that's fine. So I just, again, wanted to highlight that the Town Center Subarea is an existing subarea that was established in 2008. We are not proposing to create a new subarea. It's existing. We're not proposing to change the boundary of it. We're working within the existing boundary. I think that it's important, just like the prior vocabulary slide, for us to all understand, what is a subarea? What is a subarea plan? A subarea plan is a geographic-specific implementation plan for how you will achieve the overarching and higher-level policies of the comprehensive plan in a specific geographic area. We should not be creating new policies in a subarea plan. We should be refining them and operationalizing them in more directive policy language. And what ultimately it is to do is to implement the comp plan, and really, what it looks at is, what is unique about this geographic area? What role does it play? And how can we optimize the way in which these different pieces fit together to achieve the goals and outcomes that are desired in the comprehensive plan? I will say that the 2008 Town Center Subarea Plan is a bit heavy on the policy end, and my understanding of that is, is because at the time that it was developed and put into effect, we had, we didn't have as quite of a robust comprehensive plan as we do now. And in that sense, the 2008 Town Center Subarea Plan kind of reads like a mini comprehensive plan, and there is a lot of opportunity to strip some of that policy out, as we already have policy statements in our comprehensive plan that don't necessarily need to be repeated, again, in the Town Center Subarea Plan. So there is some opportunity to streamline the plan and clean it up. That's one of the things we're anticipating doing. I also want to highlight that, and we've talked-- policy statements in our comprehensive plan that don't necessarily need to be repeated, again, in the Town Center Subarea Plan. So there is some opportunity to streamline the plan and clean it up. That's one of the things we're anticipating doing. I also want to highlight that, and we've talked about this in several presentations in the past, that the plan itself calls for it to be updated. So there we are. It's, we're at that point in time where the plan is ready to be updated. A little bit about the process to get here. The first thing we did, you can see there is this sort of flow chart up under the header on the slide. The first thing we did was a plan and code audit. As part of that, we identified that the existing code and plan includes deficiencies and barriers to desired outcomes. It doesn't allow densities necessary to achieve the plan's goals, the existing plan's goals. The low-rise and mid-rise building types are infeasible, and that's really what we need to be focusing on in our centers. The current plan and code are misaligned, that the plan attempts to achieve something and the code, in some cases, thwarts it or does not allow it to come to fruition. The code creates permit barriers and unnecessary complexity. There are multiple steps to entitlement that are not required in other parts of the city. And there are no remaining affordable housing incentives. The affordable housing pool has been diminished, and the TDRs from the King County TDR in our local agreement have all been acquired. As part of the SEIS scoping, we went above and beyond what is required, and we did comment period during scoping. It's not something that is required under state law. We did hear from a wide range of interests in the community, some key areas of concern that were raised as previously presented and as provided in agenda bills, all the comments were provided to you, is traffic and transportation impacts was by far the biggest one. We heard a lot about school and public services capacity, which is really important, environmental and stormwater concerns, that we want to make sure that if we do develop in the town center, that it's not going to result in degradation of our surface water, our habitat, et cetera. And then there was concern raised about height and aesthetics. Now, this is not a comprehensive list. This is a high-level list, the key areas of concern. There were other things identified, and those are outlined in past packets. I did also want to highlight what is not proposed to change. I feel at times this is lost on some people. We are not proposing to change the comprehensive plan and transportation master plan adopted levels of services of city. We're not proposing to change the critical areas regulations. Any development in the town center today is required to meet critical areas regulations and will be tomorrow. Stormwater regulations and standards are not proposed to change. We have some of the best stormwater regulations in the region. We hear about it a lot from developers who really don't like them, and it is something we're not proposing to change. Our clearing and grading regulations, we restrict the amount of cut and fill, we restrict the seasonality of certain types of construction, we require wet season permits. Those are not proposed to change. Our building regulations, our building codes are not proposed to change. We might add some enhancements to try and promote green building and sustainability, but that's an enhancement on top of a standard regulation. We are not proposing to change our traffic concurrency requirements and our traffic concurrency testing requirements. The process that is in place today is not proposed to change for tomorrow. We're not proposing to change our school concurrency requirements. We're not proposing to change our water and sewer concurrency requirements.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Jeff Arango with Framework, and I'm going to provide an overview of the final supplemental environmental impact statement, which will be released on September 12th, this Friday. And the final SEIS is a required part of review under SEPA. It is, in addition to the draft EIS, which was issued earlier and really is the bulk of the environmental analysis. And a key part of the final SEIS is taking in analyzing and responding to comments, which I'll talk about in more detail here on the next slide. And then also includes the alternatives to be studied and supplements the findings of the original 2007 EIS. So an EIS in totality, including the draft and the final, is really a decision-making tool. It's not something that gets adopted. It's something to assist the community and decision-makers on a final decision on a series of proposed actions. And as I said previously, a big component of the final SEIS is to review and respond to comments, of which we got approximately 800 comments that we've reviewed and responded to. A selection of a preferred alternative is not required. However, in this case, the council has chosen to do so, as was done in the original EIS back in 2007. So a couple of things to note. We have been looking at two options for how the environmental analysis will feed down to individual projects. There is what's called a planned action, which is sort of an older tool under SEPA and exempts all development that is within the thresholds that were studied under the EIS. There is also a new tool called an infill exemption, which is primarily focused on residential and mixed-use projects. And for substantive commercial projects, it will remain in place, the requirement for project-level SEPA review. So there's a bit more guardrails under the infill exemption than would be done under the planned action, particularly for commercial development. We've updated the transportation analysis and includes more specific mitigation for the one intersection that failed even under the current no-action proposal, and then there's minor clarifications and updates. So the entire final SEIS document, the main body of it, is about 30 to 35 pages. The response to comments, which is in the appendix, is several hundred pages. And again, it includes a mix of standardized responses that are categorized, as well as individual responses where warranted. So some of the categories or themes, you can see there on the list, and many of those have been discussed already. There was one formal public agency comment, and that was from the Lake Washington School District. Their interest in that response was maintaining some flexibility for development of property owned by the school district and wanting to maintain the school impact fees.
So one of the biggest topics that we heard about during the DSCIS comment period was transportation. And we wanted to talk a little bit about the transportation modeling that was done and the model that the city uses. So the process that we used for the DSCIS work and the transportation analysis was following the city's recently adopted 2024 Transportation Master Plan. The model that's adopted in the Transportation Master Plan is what was used to assess transportation There have been some public comments that have been submitted on this, and I do appreciate the interest of community members trying to understand how this works. I am trying to learn how this works. I'm not a traffic engineer, as a caveat. I am not the Public Works Director, nor am I the city's traffic engineer. I am really trying to understand it from the environmental review angle, as to where there might be impacts and what the process is that's used, so that I can better apply that towards the work we're doing on the town center plan update. There were comments received that outlined that, you know, which is right. There are other neighboring jurisdictions and agencies that have provided a level of service analysis and studied some of the same intersections that Samamish has studied. And I did want to highlight the source of data on these and where this comes from. So the first one was regarding these two intersections, Issaquah Pine Lake Road and Issaquah Falls City Road, and that the level of service at this intersection was something, it was showing, the city is showing it operating as better than Issaquah is. And that's true. However, I do want to highlight that this is based on 2017 data, and that since then, there have been many shifts in behavior and traffic patterns. And there also have been many network improvements that are implemented, both in the city of Samamish, in the city of Issaquah, and on some of our state highways and some of the systems that lead up to those. So I do want to say that this is just not comparable to the city of Samamish TMP and the city's current adopted level of service. Another one was the Wash.SR202 traffic study, the corridor study, excuse me, and this is from the East Lake-Samamish Parkway to 244th Avenue Northeast. I, again, want to highlight that this is based on 2018 data. The purpose of this report was to try and identify what improvements could be made at those intersections to improve their efficiency and operation. Since then, network improvements have been implemented, and it's not comparable to the city's TMP. Some examples of, an example of network improvements, there are others, I just didn't have time to grab them all. I think this one is one that we all have seen and seen the benefits of, and that is the intersection of SR202 Redmond Way and northeast East Lake-Samamish, northeast Lake-Samamish Parkway. This is from 2019, and you can see the intersection alignment, the lane alignments, the crosswalk alignments, that as part of that SR202 study, that there were improvements that were made, such as changing the turning movements, changing the crosswalk alignments, adding a sliplane, et cetera. And you can see here how that has played out and the improvements that have been made to that intersection. I drive through this daily, both ways, at all times of day, and I have noted a significant improvement in the efficiency of this intersection. So when we talk about network improvements being made, this, I think, is a good example. That's not to say that traffic doesn't back up at the stoplight at certain times of day. That's not to say there are not inconveniences at times with delays at the light. I sit in those too. I understand that. What we're simply saying is that the data that was used in 2018 as part of the SR202 study is different now than the data based on the system and how it's operating following this improvement being made. Getting into the traffic modeling results, this slide has been presented previously as part of the DSCIS presentation that we did. There was, there were no LOS failures for any intersections in the town center under the action alternative. 212th and 8th was already failing under both the, under the no-action alternative, and it also fails under the action alternative. So that's not a change. And the modeling included additional pipeline development without LOS failures. Basically, we wanted to make sure that there's a wide range of outcomes that could come from this project in terms of development in middle housing, development in low-rise, development in mid-rise, development in mixed-use, development in commercial. And we wanted to make sure that we looked at a range of outcomes. So in doing so, we did model additionally beyond the 4,000 units that were contemplated just to see what would happen, and that did not result in additional failures even beyond the 4,000 units. So getting into transportation planning and a little bit of background about the tools that we use, there's the travel demand model, and I am summarizing what I have learned from our very skilled traffic engineering team and some of the tutorials that they have given me. So I'm learning this in real time now, so I apologize if there are any, if I stumble a little bit on this, I'm trying to get it right. It's often referred to as a travel demand forecast, and that this type of tool is used with comprehensive plan development and long-range planning efforts, including subarea planning. It's used to predict future travel patterns and traffic volumes, and it includes inputs such as land use, existing travel patterns in the transportation network. And it's baseline, it's a baseline model that reflects an existing condition, and then there are new trips that are added that then identify where there might be implications and how the intersections are operating. It's used in conjunction with an operational analysis, which we'll get to here in a minute, and it is different than an operational analysis. The travel demand model was developed as part of our transportation master plan, which is adopted as part of our comprehensive plan. It applies state and national industry standards, and it is updated, calibrated, and validated by credentialed licensed traffic engineers. It uses baseline land use, it uses the city's street network, and actual trip generation rates surveyed from developments. It also uses our current traffic count. So our information, when I say that the 2017 data from the city of Issaquah is not comparable, that is because our data is 2023 data that we use. So there is a difference there. And from what I'm told by our traffic engineering team, that this has been validated, the model has been validated, and there's an accuracy measurement, also known as the goodness of fit, at a statistical rate of .98, which is considered to be closely matching observed data. And I know that there are some people that would not have believed this. I'm basing this on what I'm told by our traffic engineering team and how that relates back to the goodness of fit. This table outlines the difference between a travel demand forecast model tool and a traffic operational analysis tool. The demand forecast model really focuses on the future. It's really used for planning efforts to try and understand implications of actions. And it uses the Visium tool, which is something that's used widely and nationally, used nationally and internationally, excuse me. The operational analysis tool is really used on a more near-term basis. It's used in response to development proposals that are actually real. It's more granular, and it uses a Synchro or Sidra tool, and both of these are adopted through the city's transportation master plan. So rounding this out, and as we get into the plan update, the city has heard a lot from the community, and we, as we have gone along, have been compiling a list of things that we want to get right. There are things that we really know are important to the community, that are important to our success, that are important to our consistency with the comp plan and the future of the city. And this is a short list here. These are the highlights. And we're going to be bringing the longer list to the planning commission as they take up the plan and really orient the commission on some of the things we've heard, and these are going to be areas of special focus in the upcoming meetings we want to have with the planning commission and the council, to really get tailored feedback on policy statements and ultimately on code, in making sure that these things are delivered in the right way. Diverse and affordable housing, traffic and transportation, school capacity, public safety and emergency preparedness, sustainability, and utility infrastructure are really the high-level list. That's not to say there are not others that, you know, run up right short of that high list. However, these are the ones that floated to the surface. You want to do this one?
Yeah, sure. So the code, we're sort of in a similar spot, I think, as we are with the plan. We have a draft. We think we've done some good thinking and have the sort of structure of the key elements in there, but I think there's some refinement that we need to do. One of the things we need to do is better integrate it with the rest of the code, so we don't have a separate code for town center and a separate code for the rest of the community. And there are a number of reasons to do that, so we're looking forward to that. Updating, you know, some of the graphics and details in there for the form-based code, working more closely with stakeholders and development community and interested citizens regarding the code as we move forward, and then, you know, having more, I think, language in the plan that is directive to what we want to get out of the code, something David brought up. And we're looking forward to develop something that can deliver the outcomes that the community is hoping for out of the plan, that also works for the development community and for, internally, for the permitting staff as well. Yeah, so we're moving into kind of the next phase. We have a number of meetings that were scheduled, so for those that are interested to participate in the process, we'd encourage you to follow along and attend these meetings. And we'll be working very intently with the planning commission, coming back to the city council for regular check-ins along the way as well, and hopefully maintaining good communication among all, amongst all parties as we get into some of the heavy lifting on the next So, next steps, on Friday, we're going to be releasing the final SEIS. We've had a number of rounds of internal review with city staff, which has been really helpful. helpful, and it's being copy edited right now, and we'll be releasing that on the twelfth. We have a town center plan meeting coming up with the planning commission on the eighteenth, which we're looking forward to. And then we're picking, planning to pick up the town center code again in the winter of twenty twenty-six. And as David said, we're hoping for adoption around the middle of next year. So a lot of opportunities for more involvement and feedback from the community, and we're entering a little bit of a different stage, so not necessarily the formal commenting that's part of the E I S process, but now sort of a more holistic planning process where we can kind of take in all the feedback and incorporate it into the plan and the code accordingly. So, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Custom members, Stuart, your light is still on, but I wondered if you wanted to be first anyway.
I just had a couple of questions. One, kind of going back to to the beginning where we talked about what does it mean to have capacity? And I think as I have read, and certainly there are a lot of these new state laws, and I've read through them several times, but as I've read through it, there's there's zoned capacity is one thing, and I think that's what our comprehensive plan does a good job of addressing is, do we have enough, you know, numbers of units that could be built to meet the number of units we have to build, right? And I think that that is where we are compliant. Where I think it gets grayer, and my understanding of some of these new state laws is that it's not just enough to say you need to build a hundred units and we have enough space to build a hundred units, it's the space that you have to build a hundred units, and you talked a little bit about this, is it feasible? Is it going to happen? And what happens as we, we have to report on this, as I understand it, every year to show our progress. There are requirements that the Commerce Department has to review these and to put a city under review, which includes, in some ways, you might say that they may have been written to describe Sammish because it talks about that we're not producing a particular, a certain amount of affordable house or a certain amount of affordable housing based on our allocations. It talks about the fact that if you don't produce at least fifty percent of the region's housing, then you can be under review. And then, I forget now, shoot, I was just looking at what the third one was, but basically we can be put under review, and if we do get put under review, there are, in fact, consequences from that. We've already seen a challenge to Mercer Island where they lost. So can you guys talk a little bit more about what does it mean to have the capacity and to be able to, and you use the wording, and I didn't write it down, that that we can enable and ensure, what is it, how are we going to plan for accommodate and deliver the affordable housing? Because I think that's where it's getting challenging. And it's not that we're trying to to do anything other than both be compliant with the law and ensure that we are complying with the intention of the law, right? This isn't a, at least from my perspective, it isn't a matter of can I check a box? If these laws are coming into place because the state of Washington needs to produce a million new housing units by twenty forty-four, are we actually doing the right things to comply with the spirit of the law? And then one other question I have, and I think this might help clear it up, is when we talk about our housing allocation versus our growth target, we always talk about twenty-one hundred. Why don't we talk about twenty-five hundred and one? Because we have four hundred and one additional housing units that we have to create for our supportive housing. And I think if we can talk about the totality of the housing, the housing allocation that we are required to do by law, so putting aside the growth target, but just talking about, and I pulled up the the page from our comprehensive plan that has the graphic, right? And it talks about how many housing units we're required to do, zero to thirty, thirty to fifty, and fifty to eighty, right? We don't have any require, they're not asking us to build at eighty percent A M I. Everything they're asking us to do from a housing allocation perspective is below eighty percent A M I. So all of these lots that we talk about out in neighborhoods where people might build, unless we have a way to drive those costs down, they will not, they will not count for any of that housing allocation, right? Which is why we have the the fifteen hundred square foot limit and why we're doing the fee in lieu of, because we have to produce twenty-five hundred and one affordable housing units below eighty percent A M I, including four hundred and one, what are those called? Emergency transitional housing units. So I just want people to understand, we're not doing this because we get any benefit, we're not doing this because we want to benefit a particular developer or anyone. We're doing this because there is a dire need in our, in our city, in our county, and across our country to have this type of housing. We heard that people are are looking to take advantage of some of these laws to be able to build housing units on their lots for their kids, not just because they want their kids to come back, but because their kids can't afford housing any other way. So I just want to call that out, that this is not, this is not something that we're doing because of some other nefarious thing. But can you talk about that capacity? Because you say we're compliant, but when I read through the law, if our policies do not produce housing, we are in fact not compliant. And as we look at it today, if we don't make any changes to our policies, we already know we are not going to produce housing in the zero to thirty percent range with our current policies.
So I'll start, and then David can add. Great question, and I think I will start by saying that, you know, planning under the Growth Management Act is an ongoing programmatic type thing. There's never a point where you can say, we've met all the requirements, we're good, we can move on. And, you know, the first step, which was a big step this time because of all the new requirements, was getting through the planning process, getting through the P S R C review, getting through all the agency review, getting your plan certified, all of those things. That's a big step, I don't want to undersell that. And Sammish did, I think, a very good job, got high marks, and set the stage to be compliant. But you're correct, the farther that communities are from the outcomes that they planned for, the more red flags there are. And under the Growth Management Act, you know, plans get challenged by individuals or organizations, and you don't know exactly when or why or under what circumstances that is going to happen. You mentioned Mercer Island, who did have their plan challenged, and they have a compliance issue, so they have to spend a year, go back to the drawing board, particularly related to affordable housing, and don't know all of the circumstances around that. I have looked through the decision, it's very interesting. There's also been another challenge for Kitsap County's plan. Not sure that it was invalidated in the same way, but one of the issues was planning for affordable housing that they were found to be noncompliant for. So that's not a place, I think, that the community wants to be. And you're right, as we start to move into the implementation phase, if we don't produce any of that affordable housing, you know, there's more susceptibility for something to be challenged. If it is challenged, that would go to the hearings board, they would issue a decision, and then there would be some remediation process, something we've helped at least one other jurisdiction do when they found their plan to to not be in compliance. So yes, the fact that you had your plan certified and adopted does not give you necessarily any cover. And there is, of course, the continued implementation phase where you're trying to narrow the gap between where you are today and what you're planning for. And admittedly, those are difficult things to plan for, to be able to produce housing units at that lower level. Now, when you look at Sammish Town Center and what it's been planned for, it's supposed to be the place where we have affordable housing, we have inclusionary requirements, you know, before the ones that were implemented citywide, there's a transfer of development rights program. So that's kind of ground zero for where affordable housing traditionally had been planned for. And when you look at the numbers of just growth citywide versus what's happened in Town Center, it's clearly not producing the results. And that is directly attributable to the development code, which is not aligned with the plan outcomes and all of the things that we've raised in the code audit. So this next phase of Town Center will help to implement the comprehensive plan, hopefully start to deliver market housing, affordable housing, town square, new streets and public amenities, retail, you know, all of the things that are envisioned in the plan. But that really can't move forward if development isn't feasible, because we're relying on developers, property owners to construct a lot of the improvements in Town Center. So hopefully that helped answer the question, and David?
Yeah, I have one follow-up. So on top of everything that Jeff just said, I really wanted to drill down a little more on compliance, right? So, you know, we, we've, like, like Jeff said, we've seen Mercer Island, their plan and code, right, was was ultimately appealed to the hearings board. And part of that was because they, the premise of their affordable housing, and I'm oversimplifying this, was that you just add a story to all their downtown development, and that's where the affordable housing goes. But that, the premise of that is that there's a building being built. So while, while, sure, it could provide some, there's, it sort of falls short of actually delivering anything. So that, that is the foundation for that. So when thinking about this, the first step is, is your comprehensive plan compliant? Are you showing that there's capacity within the land use areas in the city based on the densities that you envision will will allow that type of development? And if you can show that, you're good. We're good. We showed that. Without making any changes today, we're good. The second is, does your code that you're using to implement it allow it? Is it, is it permissive? Does it allow, does it, does it, or is it a barrier? Some cities or counties will adopt a really great plan and policy language, and then they'll go and they'll, they'll create a code that doesn't allow it to happen. And that's the second bar. And currently, you know, I would say that from my perspective that we are compliant. We still allow in our code the delivery of a certain number of units. We're teetering on the edge of that. We're compliant. The next phase is implementation, and that's really the challenging part, because we then get graded by the state, by, by, by the state Department of Commerce, P S R C, by the county on our success. We are now required at one, we're almost a year out, we're, we're going to start working on our, on our reports to P S R C in King County. We're going to have to talk about all the things we've been doing to try and, and see this type of housing be built by the, the market builders, the for-profit builders, right? They're our partners in this, and we have to find a way for these projects to be feasible. We don't have to pay for it. We don't have to allocate city dollars to build affordable housing. That's not something that is a requirement. However, we do need to make sure that our, we're continuously, I think you said it's a continuous process to plan under G M A, deliver codes under G M A. We have to continuously reassess how we're doing, and this is a little different than in the past. There, there's another case out now too, where Clyde Hill, as I understand it, is about to possibly have their plan appealed to the Growth Board. So, you know, that's another case. I think they're working to try and settle that in advance and not actually have it make it to the hearings board. But it is a real thing. Not saying we're right there, this is not like a, under the threat of, you know, appeal to the hearings board. We're compliant today, we're, we're in good shape today, but we're putting in the work now to make sure we're compliant tomorrow.
But David, when we were talking about the comprehensive plan and the reason we even, this even came up in the first place was because when we went through that process, we said, look, we know that it's possible, but it's not probable. And as I read these new state laws, they don't say that you have to not have a barrier, they now have to say that you have to enable and produce, right? So to me, that's the difference. That's what changed in the state laws. It used to be, hey, you just can't have a requirement that says I have to build, you know, a million parking spaces, which is going to prevent any of it from happening. Now we have to have code that, like, the plans, again, separate from the comprehensive plan, but our actual codes to say that we can show that we're going to produce it. And we already know, given the current market conditions, that we are not going to produce housing units in the zero to thirty percent range, right? You guys told us that as much as that. So that's where I'm confused, because I'm responding to the, we already know we don't have a plan that will produce the affordable allocation that we are required to do.
So we, we do have other areas in the city where it is possible, although less likely, and that is on faith-based ownership parcels and on public ownership parcels.
But isn't that where we're trying to target that transitional housing? Because that's even harder to build. So we have four hundred and one units of transitional housing that we know isn't going to just be built by market builders, right?
Right. I, I think it all plays out in implementation, and this is where this is challenging for us, because there are new laws, there isn't a lot of case law or precedent on this as to how these are resolved. We don't, we don't see exactly how far the state will go in showing, showing its teeth, so to speak. And we're really trying to navigate this with all the other cities, you know, in, in the county, across the state, trying to understand how this plays out. We, and which is why when I, when I was talking earlier, we also, at the same time, it's not just about compliance, we actually have a housing problem. And we're, we're really wanting to try and find some solutions towards fixing that housing problem. So that coupled with wanting to remain in compliance, and that coupled with wanting to implement in a way that's meaningful and that, you know, we're, we're, you know, I, I have to say that, you know, if, so there is, in, in the Town Center code, if you look at the zoning table for the, you know, the allow, the, the building heights and the number of units and the densities, there's a maximum density, there's an allocated density, then there's some footnotes underneath that. If you look at, I think it's footnote two, the bottom of that table, basically in the T C A today, it is unlimited density. And what that means is that so long as there are T D Rs to buy, you can build as many units as you can fit into the T C A. Now, there's a two thousand unit cap under the S E I S, or excuse me, under the, the F E I S that was, that was put in place in two thousand and seven. However, under state law, you could do a project level E I S, and you could proceed with development. So if the, if the council decided that they wanted to collaborate with King County and they wanted to amend the interlocal agreement and add T D Rs to the interlocal agreement, which currently serves as a cap, the code allows a lot more development to happen in the T C A. It's just artificially constrained and capped by the, the, the interlocal agreement with King County and the number of T D Rs that are available. C P A and the E I S, that's, sure, it's meaningful, but there are alternative paths to get around that. So I guess my point is, is that, that you could, you know, in a different scenario, but what, what we wanted to do as a city is to take on this conversation with the community. We wanted to work collaboratively to try and find a path forward to address implementation of our comprehensive plan. Instead of amending the interlocal agreement and adding T D Rs and allowing a developer to do a project level E I S on a big development, which they could do, we chose...
In which we would have very little say in what happened, right?
Right. We, we, we chose this path because we felt it was the best way to engage the community to really try to focus on implementation in a meaningful way and get the right outcomes. Now, not everyone's going to agree, and it's, it's a challenging conversation, but I hope that the schedule that you see in front of you shows the, the number of meetings and opportunity to engage. And what the outcome is on the other end of that, I don't know. I do know that it is guided by our comprehensive plan, it's guided by King County county-wide planning policies, it's guided by P S R C's Vision twenty fifty, it's guided by state, the State Growth Management Act, and it's guided, most importantly, by what the community provides in feedback as to what they want.
And, and based on what we know today, if we make no changes to the Town Center Plan, how many housing units are we likely to get in the zero to thirty percent range? Without any, you know, subsidies, without us taxing our, our taxpayers to subsidize that building?
Today, none, because of land economics, but there's the future, I have to add that caveat.
Well, sure, but, but we have, we have no, we have no method to enable that to happen right now, right? In, in terms of, we have no, we have no policies in place that enable that or will show a production of that. That's what concerns me, right?
Absent public investment. That's correct.
Okay. So unless we come up with just money and we just start shelling out cash, we're not going to see that happen. Okay. Thank you. And then I just want to make a comment that from my perspective, for the, the traffic numbers that we've heard a lot of feedback on, like, we're going to continue to dig into that and make sure that we get answers to folks around why we're seeing inconsistencies. I appreciate the, the sort of primer here. But again, the S E, the finalizing the E I S doesn't mean we're changing anything. It just means that we now have more information with which to move forward. We haven't made any final decisions, we're not going to pick, we haven't picked what that final number is, we're going to the next step so that we can do that next level of investigation. And so I just want people to know that we're going through the process as to... And so I just want people to know that we're going through the process as defined, step by step, so that we can strike that balance. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb? Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you. So there are many residents that continue to think, just like what Councilmember Stewart said, that we are building 4,000 units, and we're not, and the FEIS is just a planning document. Can you talk a little bit more about the town center plan and how we're going to use this tool to, to, to create the town center plan, update it, and exactly what level of specificity we're going to get in terms of affordable housing units?
Yeah. So, you know, up until this point, the process has been very technical and focused on the EIS. And I think also sort of wading through the existing plan and policies to get to the point where we are now. As a firm, we do a lot of subarea planning, and we would typically approach that very differently. We'd focus a lot more on sort of physical planning and urban design issues, looking at streetscape concepts, implementation strategies, identifying kind of high-level code updates and, and a framework for that as well. And as David described, usually a little lighter on like goals and policies. Usually has a vision statement, maybe some kind of framework goals and things like that to kind of guide the development of the plan, but it's not like a mini comprehensive plan. And so one of the things that's come up, which we completely agree about, is there isn't really any current renderings or plant, physical planning of what it's going to look like, which we do all the time and would typically do as part of a process like this. In addition to that, I think the concepts that were out there previously, both in the code and the plan, are pretty outdated. And if you actually go and look at those concepts, you know, it doesn't reflect what actually happened in some cases. So in addition to being able to just provide graphics and illustrations for the plan, it's really a scenario planning tool that we can use with you all and with the community to start to look at what that looks like, be able to accept feedback, make changes to that. And then that sort of 3D model, which would include all of your streets and at least massing for some of the buildings, and some places could be more detailed, open spaces, things like that, would be a future tool that the city could use to update it. So let's say in 10 years, you make some updates, you want to look at some potential changes in a certain area, you could fairly easily go and update that. So I think it's going to be very useful, and I think hopefully will bring the conversation back to some of those important issues of how we can shape the future of Town Center. And we're really looking forward to that and hope people are excited to participate in that and have some dialogue.
And I'm sure in this process, we're going to be hearing more from the developer, and they'll probably likely have a lot of input. And so I'm sure everybody here is probably looking for that number, like, what is that capacity number going to be? We will reach that point, right? At least closer to, to getting an understanding of what that number will be and how many units we can get that are affordable. I guess that's really what I'm driving at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Tree.
Council decided on the growth target number. We submitted that to King County. King County then assigned that number to us, correct?
Correct, although the origin of the number comes from the Growth Caucus, right? And that gave us a range in which we could work with, and then the council fine-tuned it for the final number.
Correct. Second, do we need to expand capacity in the, in the town center to meet our growth target? This is a simple answer.
Not to meet our growth target.
Thank you. Are we guaranteeing the developer profitability? I hear the word feasibility all the time. Are we guaranteeing his profitability by passing a subarea? Okay, and that answer is no too. That's, that's, that's what I thought. That's, just wanted to make sure. Could we have started with another subarea center that has less impact on the environment and the cost for that would be possibly less? Say the Pine Lake or any other center?
We have three areas, Pine Lake, we have Kohani, Pine Lake, and Englewood identified, and we could have started with another one of those. That's correct.
So the answer is yes. Thank you. The GMA allows a city or municipality to decide what type of city we want to be. I represent a large number of residents who want to be a thriving community of mosaic neighborhoods that is sustainable and prosperous. So I do appreciate, based on that, I do appreciate, David, I appreciate the aspirational attempt to create a town center plan in what is mostly an empty space. So, but why would we spend 3/4 of a million dollars on a comprehensive plan and then turn around and spend another 300 million, 3/4 of a million dollars on a town center subarea plan? Why would we do that?
The town center plan, as it stands today, and we went through that in a prior slide, as the code stands today, is not delivering the outcome that the plan itself identifies. And it needs to be overhauled. If the plan itself even identifies that, it needs to be overhauled at a certain time. That in order for us to see the type of development that the comprehensive plan is envisioning, that it necessitates an update to the town center plan. And that that was something that was established as part of the city's vision statement, as was shown in a prior slide, and is identified as a priority in the city's comprehensive plan, in addition to the other subareas. And that that is something that was added to the city's work plan by the city council and given to staff to take on in the timeframe that we're working on it in.
Thank you. So, new subject matter. So you're saying that, or in your comments, marked down page 18, but I think it was 19, you were saying that the transit plan, the transportation master plan are adequate? You were saying that, are they adequate to meet the, except for the one exception of the failing intersection, that, that those are, they're not going to change, they're adequate to meet housing, transportation, the, are they really? Are tran, the current transfer, trans, okay, so maybe this, sorry. So I'll re-question. Sorry. So I'll just, let me move on then past the transportation, because, because then I jumped right into, in my head, I was like, okay, wait a second. If this is, let's just go dial it down a little bit more and say it's a six-year tip, right? Here's the money to build the roads, and here's what we have budgeted for it, you know? So, and, so I'm just wondering, I mean, really, can we build the roads in the towns that are proposed in this town center plan currently? Can we build the roads?
The current plan that we have today or the proposed plan?
The proposed plan, yeah. No, the current one. We can't even do that one, to be honest with you. And so I'm guessing we can't do this one either.
Well, one of the challenges with the road alignments in the current plan is that they're shown through critical areas, across ravines, they're shown in, in areas that are really expensive to build. So one of the things we're trying to do is to realign the roads to different locations where they make more sense, where they're cheaper to build, easier to build. And we're trying to align them along with potential blocks of development where the developer could build most of the internal circulation roads, and that the city could then be in the role of building some of the, the more, the larger connector roads that, that provide the wider connection across the town center.
Yeah. So, and I just, I mean, I was reading through some of the documents, and I could be wrong on this, but is the cost to the residents estimated at about $40 million for those roads?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to seek that from, yeah.
Just, just, I, I just was, I was just curious, because, I mean, you were, there's talk about, you know, what's, I mean, I know, I've talked to traffic engineers over the last six years and actually since 2019. And, you know, I know how much it costs per mile for a road, and depending on the standards that you set within there, there is a particular cost to roads. And the type of road network that you're proposing here is expensive, okay? Especially when you start adding your transit, you start pedestrian, bike, and the mobility pieces to it. It's expensive. So I don't know if it was 40 million, but I know it's a, it's a big number, right? And now, here, I'll just give you an, if you give me a little leeway, I know it's not part of this discussion, but Sahali Way, that we just looked at, was 79 to 100 million and not adding lanes. So, so just, just want to say that's, there's some dollars here. And if the developer, here's been my point too, since I got on the city council, is if the developer came in here and said, hey, I'll build the infrastructure for you because I'm going to make bank, right? And then we kind of, in a sense, make sure it's feasible for them because they're our partners, which you know I hate that word. But the reality is, is if, if we're going to do that, if that's the proposal, right, then I need some, I see, I need some numbers as far as what it's going to cost. And then, and then some, some written guarantee from the developer that he's going to pay for the majority of it. And, and my biggest challenge right now is that Sixth Street showed up as a huge surprise to me, and then we're paying for the majority of that, which we had already, prior to me getting on the council, had paid for Fourth. So it's, it just seems to me that in five years, or now almost six years of serving in this role, that we're giving, 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 and when I walk over there or ride my bike or drive my truck over there and see what's being actually built, I struggle to find the benefit to the community. I do see the value of the structures and the housing and the commercial and the homes for people. I see the value of that, right? But what I don't see is, like, where is then the, the infrastructure, which includes parks, that is, that's not already there? Because they get to walk out the door and they're in our park, which is great for them, but they, again, we paid for it. Okay, the taxpayers paid for that. So, so I just find it really difficult. And I have three more pages, but for, because, because this is, because I have to go to work tomorrow morning and teach kids, I would like to turn this back over to the mayor and, and get to the public. Thanks.
Okay, residents, you guys have been really great so far. No, you have. So I'm just hoping that we can continue to be really great so far and continue with comments, because we are not done with our meeting. So is there anyone else with comments? I'm sorry. You have a question. Yeah, this is actually a great time to ask questions.
Sid.
Oh, and is Sid, perfect. So let me get to Sid first. Excuse me, Councilmember Gupta.
Hi, thank you. We talked a little bit about impact fees, David. So it's my understanding that the, any proposed improvements, whether it's parks, whether it's transportation, that is where the majority of our funding would come from. Is that correct for these mitigation projects?
Hard to say if it would be the majority, but certainly it's a significant funding source.
I think, I don't, I don't think it's in this, I apologize, I'm still a little out of it, I haven't been feeling well. I think in a previous agenda packet, it did lay out some, some ballpark estimates for different levels of buildout in town center. And my recollection, my recollection is that those dollars were in the tens of millions for both parks and transportation and schools. So, you know, I understand that these projects are expensive, but that is why we have impact fees, is my understanding, specifically to serve, to address the increased strain on our infrastructure by the residents of that new development.
Yep. Just, just--
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Just to be clear, in the current plan, and we'll be working through this in the plan update, it is intended for the majority of the streets to be built by the developer. And in order for them to be able to pay for those streets, which, which are quite costly, they need to be able to have a feasible project. So I think that's part and parcel why some of those streets have not been built out. And, you know, we're not proposing tax increases to the residents to pay for any of the infrastructure. And we also, as part of our due diligence in the EIS, looked at some network alternatives so we could understand how necessary those city-funded projects are to make sure that we were applying any resources effectively to the project, and that's an ongoing part of the process. So just wanted to clarify that. And then the last one is the new project being developed, developed includes a private park. So there is park space that will be publicly accessible as part of that first phase.
Thank you. And then I think one more thing that I have been considering is why would we, why would we start with town center and not something that is already existing impervious surface, like, for example, Pine Lake? And it's my understanding that, you know, since the existing, the current town center plan was adopted, that 2,000 unit cap still exists, the property owners have the right to develop that property. And I think like 400 units have been built, another, up to like 1050 have been either built or permitted, or in somewhere in the permitting process. So that leaves 950 units that have yet to be permitted or built. And based on the economic analysis we did last year, it's primarily going to be town homes. So that development, if we, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if we chose to focus our planning efforts somewhere else, it is likely that the town center, the remaining 83, 85 acres yet to be developed in town center of buildable land would be 950 town homes, right? That would still be developed. So that seems to be the rationale of why we would focus here, so that we can make use of that capacity that is going to be built one way or another. So it seems like this would be an opportune moment. Is that, do you feel like that's accurate?
For the most part, yes. I mean, I, I think in some respects, you know, the, the city chose to start with town center in 2008, and I think that's, you know, one of the reasons why the community gravitated towards it. I think also we heard a lot during the comprehensive plan from residents just wanting diverse housing, market housing, and things like that. And even that can't move forward in the town center right now. So, I mean, some of town center, even if you weren't making larger changes, there's just fundamental things that would need to be fixed in order to, again, align the plan and outcomes in a stronger fashion.
Great, thank you. And I think just one thing that has been helpful for me is, I think I remember the Brownstone West development, which is currently being built just north of Lower Commons Park, is just under 40 units. So the 950 units that are currently allowed would be, you know, 20, over 20 times that development scale of primarily town homes. And that is what we would be looking at because that is what is profitable for the developer right now without increased density. And at least for me, that doesn't, I think it bears more investigation as to whether 20 more, development to the scale of 20 more Brownstone West is really the, the best outcome for our community in terms of the existing town center plan and our 2024 call plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentations. Very helpful. You know, the town center has produced nearly $5 million in street impact fees and over $1 million in park impact fees. Five million-- 5 million, 1 million so far. For the remainder of town center, the city is estimated to receive between 27 and 36 million in street impact fees and 14 million and 19 million in park impact fees, which can be utilized to address gaps in infrastructure and ensure impacts are mitigated. I think, you know, this is a, this is a pretty solid and informed estimate on what we think we're going to get. I think it's incumbent on each council member to be very careful about throwing out numbers without backing up a source so that no misinformation gets distributed inadvertently. I want to thank you again for the presentation, very helpful. And I'm really optimistic that what you'll be able to do with some of the slides that you presented is that they end up on the website. Because one of the advantages to having a nice crowd like this is I'm hoping that they've had an opportunity to ingest some of the information that's been presented here. It's hard to learn new things and it's hard to adjust thinking and to stay flexible. But this is what this whole process frankly has been teaching me, is how to go through something very prescriptive in stages one, two, three, four, all the way to six. So we're not there yet. We've learned a lot, but we're not done learning. So I look forward to the next meeting when we learn more. So thank you. Next, we're going to be moving on.
We have questions.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. I can't tell because everybody has their lights on still.
Oh, we put our lights back on, sorry.
Okay, so.
Either one, I don't care.
Actually, I can't, just now?
No.
A while ago, okay. Well, if that's the case, then, Councilmember Trine, did you have more?
No.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I just wanted to clarify one thing that Councilmember Trine asked.
Hey, folks, folks, you've been doing so good. You've been, but we do have our business to get through. We have our.
You don't respect us as well.
That's right.
This is shameful behavior.
That's right.
You represent us, not us, you.
Thank you. Bang your gavel, gavel.
Stick to your agenda, you son of a... Be quiet right now. I know you're a little too naughty.
Okay. And that, and that's okay. In case you guys hadn't, you guys did not read, you didn't read the, if you, we have to notice meetings 24 hours in advance. Your agenda stated clearly, clearly, 24 hours ago, that the public comment is after public business. We are continuing with our business. Deputy Mayor Lamb, please continue.
I had a question, or rather, I wanted to clarify a comment that Councilmember Trine made, which was, he asked the question, would we meet our growth target of 2,100 with no changes into the town center plan? And you said yes. Is that correct?
So remember that a growth target?
Yes.
Is not a ceiling or a floor. It's simply, do we have the capacity in our city to accommodate 2,100 units of growth, whether it be in the neighborhoods, the town center, the other sub, the other possible sub areas? And the answer is absolutely yes. We have capacity beyond what our growth target is.
Right. But we would not meet our housing allocation of 2,100, and that is correct, right?
That is debatable. That's, that's, I think, the, the point of tension around implementation. And that, that's where we're, we're looking at, we, we currently allow the housing typologies, the low-rise and mid-rise.
Right.
On faith-based properties and on publicly owned properties.
Right.
Based on the acreage of those properties, we do have a substantial capacity. Town center is also factored into that. Now, that's the next step. That's, that's, does the code allow it? Then you get into actual implementation, which is, are you putting in forward all of the steps to try to, dare I say, promote it? Like, that is, that is the next step. It's part of implementation. And that's what the state is now looking towards as we have an adopted comp plan, we have adopted regulations, we've made it through certification, and we've said we're going to be doing these things. One of the things we say in our comp plan is that we're going to be amending our town center plan in order to better facilitate, better enable mid-rise, low-rise and mid-rise building typologies in the town center. That we're going to revisit our affordable housing configuration about how, you know, we're, we're getting incentive units, what we're, all the tools that we're using, those are all part of implementation.
Right.
So, so it's this question of you have capacity, growth target, housing allocation, and then you revisit as part of implementation, your capacity. So here we are revisiting that capacity, looking at trying to enhance the capacity for low-rise and mid-rise in the town center in a meaningful way that will actually deliver it. If we are not successful in doing that, when we report out, it really depends on how these new laws play out. This is where I'm, I, I don't know the answer because we have not seen how the new laws will play out yet with other cities.
Right.
No, no city has made it through to that next phase yet. We're all in it together. We're all moving into implementation.
And to be compliant with the GMA, we have to enable, or rather, we have to plan and accommodate 2,100.
And produce.
Affordable housing units. And that is correct, right?
2,100, yes, affordable housing. That's correct. Because of our housing allocation.
2,501 technically.
Well, that's correct if you add the PHS, yeah.
Right. And if there are no changes, and according to the draft, SCIS, because the final, I haven't seen the final yet, if we don't make any changes to the town center plan, we, it is unlikely we will meet our obligations to the GMA. Is that correct?
It's unlikely that we will deliver those housing units.
Okay, it is unlikely we will deliver those housing units. And so as it stands today, if we do not make any changes to our town center plan, it is, it is very likely that the developer will build only town homes and it is unlikely there will be any shops or restaurants. Is that correct?
That's a, that's a possible outcome. There's a wide range of things that could happen in the future. I just, I don't know. But, but I will say that we would likely see, based on today's land economics, town homes be built. That is what we, we understand to be an attractive housing type for developers to build because it is profitable for them.
Okay. So a sea of town homes, basically.
And it does still require the same level of, of road infrastructure, some, some comparable level of road infrastructure because you now are servicing all those seas of town homes around that area.
Okay.
And that, that, you know, if that's an outcome that, that is acceptable, that's fine with me. I, I'm here to try to implement what the direction is that I'm given.
Okay. So then if there's a sea of town homes, right, we won't achieve the density of the, with the apartments and condos for affordable, which would have added pressure on neighborhoods, possibly?
There's an opportunity cost that comes with filling in the town center that is currently zoned for low-rise and mid-rise by filling that in instead with town homes because the land that you had set aside for low-rise and mid-rise is now occupied by town homes. And that opportunity cost is that those low-rise and mid-rise units need to go somewhere else.
So those low-rise and mid-rises that would not be built in town homes because they're filled with, in town center because they're filled with town homes could likely go to the outside to the rest of the city, correct?
We likely as, so what, one path could be is that we see the town, town center built out with town homes. And we then are reporting out on our progress to the state as we are required to do. And they identify that we are not delivering the unit types that are part of our housing allocation. They identify then that we, there are what are called reasonable measures that are put in place. And they then indicate that we need to find additional lands or additional areas that are zoned for and are, are planning for and accommodating mid-rise. That could go in the Kohani or the Inglewood or the, the Pine Lake future sub areas.
Okay.
So that could be a potential path for future compliance if the town center was built out with town homes. I just wanted to highlight that, that that is an alternative.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make one clarifying remark was that Sahali right now is only 20, the alternatives are 20 to 70 million, not 70 to 200 million, as Councilmember Trine stated. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, did you have anything?
Yeah, and I'll try to be really quick. Did I hear you correctly and say that the plan, the 17-year-old plan as it currently is, has roads going through critical areas?
That's, that's, it shows the road alignments going through ravines, critical areas, steep slopes, stream buffers, yes.
So no matter what, we have to revise the town center plan? Because we can't build a road through, I mean, we shouldn't build a road through critical areas.
And that's an important point that I also want to highlight, that regardless of anything, we do need to update the town center plan because we are required under HB 1110 to allow middle housing in all zones in the city. And currently, the TCE zone only allows R1 density. So we, we would at a minimum, the absolute minimum update to the town center plan that we would be required to take on under state law would be to allow middle housing in the TCE zone.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I hear, I hear some moaning from the, the crowd. And I want you to know, I, I appreciate your concerns. Okay, all right. Okay, my next. My next question is, it's my understanding that our goal, our goal in looking at increasing the number of housing units is not to give anything away. It's, it, I can do this all night. I mean, it's just respect. We, we will respect you when you speak. I'll send my questions in email and then we'll be accused of not being open and transparent. Thank you, David.
Are, are, is council done with questions?
I'm not done with questions, but I can't seem to get them asked.
Do you need, if, would you like to get them answered now?
I would, I very much would.
Then let's go through your questions and after this, we'll be getting into the next topic.
Excellent. Okay. So my understanding is that the goal here is to be able to create like we have seen because the, the most places, the only place where we've seen any significant affordable housing ever be built is in the town center. While it hasn't produced what we wanted it to, it's the only place where we're really seeing it any numbers. Is that accurate?
In current history, yes.
Right. So right now, for the number of housing units that have been built in town center, we've seen more than 10% of those units are affordable, correct? Because they used all of the bonus pool and the TDRs.
Correct.
Right. So for what's been built to date, it's more than 10%.
Yeah, just wanted to point out one thing is some of the buildings that have been permitted but not developed that utilize the TDRs also do not include a substantial affordable housing because the TDRs don't require that.
Okay. But, but one of the things you stated when we went through our housing plan and that the planning commission recommended to us is this concept of a bonus pool. That by having a bonus pool of houses, that's how we can get housing, more affordable housing built above the 10%. Because the only places in the entire country that we've seen greater than 10% affordable housing built is when we do things like incentives, like bonus pools. And what a bonus pool requires is that you have additional housing units available to say, if you, if you want to build 10 more housing units, you have to build X number of affordable and we're going to give you all of those units from a bonus pool, correct?
That's the, the general theory behind it, yes.
So we're not really giving things away. Anything that we do, anything that we allow above the, the current 2,200, because it's really not 2,000, it's 2,200 with the TDRs, or somewhere in that neighborhood, right? Because the TDR is added above the 2,000, as I understand it.
Well, the 2,000 is a, the EIS cap, right? But there's, then there's a, the actual density that could be accommodated and because of TDRs and how TDRs are counted, yeah, it's complicated.
Right. But, so to build above that, we'll just call it 2,000, and to build above that 2,000, we are going to get things in return for that. We're either going to get community amenities, we're going to get additional environmental protections, we're going to get solar, we're going to get additional affordable housing. Those are all things we can ask for and require. And that's what we're looking to get, is to get those additional community amenities. We're not just giving away more housing units.
In addition, yeah, affordable housing and other design benefits, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I also want to point out that I'm not sure why we always refer to developers as he, because women can be developers too. I just want to throw that out there.
Okay. Are you done? Okay, great. So we're moving on now. Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation and the information. Look forward to the next time you guys show up. We're now moving on to discussion with George Davis Creek Fish Passage and Storm Improvement Project. And folks, it would really help us out and help us speed through this if we could actually hear the people presenting. The agenda is very clear, which was posted well over 24 hours ago. We actually legally can't change the order of things without a motion. And I didn't even think I could have done it then. So, no, we're going to continue, thank you, because we have a job to do and we're doing our job. So, thank you, Audrey and Catherine. Let's go through the George Davis Creek.
Listen to us and hear us out.
This is like, this is like being in Russia.
Audrey, excuse me, how long did you say you might be taking?
It's about 15 minutes.
15 minutes? All right, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council, as well as community members. We're very excited to present a project update for the George Davis Creek Fish Passage and Stormwater Improvement Project. I can wait, sure.
If folks need to leave, now would be a good time because we actually need to hear the presentation, this is important information.
For the record, I'm Audrey Starcy, the Public Works Director for the City of Sammamish. I am joined to my right by Catherine Hoffman. Very excited to introduce you to council, or introduce her to council. She is our stormwater engineer on staff and the project manager for this very important project for the city. And she is also working on the fish passage assessment evaluation that we are working on as well citywide. So a quick overview, and we will try to speed up our presentation a little bit, but we wanted to make sure and spend some time to refresh the community on the surface water goals and policies that this project is implementing and achieving, as well as the project history, project and scope, schedule and budget, and where we are to the project to date and funding partners and stakeholders. And finally, with a few next steps, we'll be back numerous times over the next about year and a quarter. These are some of the surface water goals and policies that are identified in the comprehensive plan that this project is achieving. They are mostly centered around, of course, preserving and protecting critical areas, riparian habitats and natural areas, as well as protecting our natural waterways and our groundwater and basins. They are also facilitating sustainable surface water management. So all, this project is accomplishing this and many more. We didn't put the goals up here in our separate 2016 Surface and Stormwater Comprehensive Plan that this project is also accomplishing.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm really excited to update you on the George Davis Creek Fish Passage and Storm Improvement Project. Just to give you a quick overview on the purpose...
Right now, this is the existing layout of George Davis Creek. As you can see on the bottom, the blue line is the current layout of the creek. The purple barrier is the existing dam that exists on the creek. And then, as the creek goes towards East Lake Samamish Parkway, we hit a sedimentation basin, and then it goes through piped first, and then also daylighted portions of the creek before it outlets into Lake Samamish. And then the next slide. So, here is the proposed creek profile. I'll start on the upper reach, starting at the D, it's identified as Portion D, and that's going to be our dam removal. And then as we go down the creek, it's, the A portion is where we're doing the stream restoration and the culvert replacement under East Lake Samamish Parkway. And then the Portion B is where we partner with King County in replacing the culverts under East Lake Samamish Trail, because they are also barriers to fish passage. And then the E portion is the relocated creek to daylight and outflow into Lake Samamish. And then C is where the existing bypass pipe will be removed, as it's no longer needed. And then if we move forward, sorry, there's a, and I also wanted to kind of bring up some of the history of the creek. So pre-1900s, the creek was used primarily by the Snoqualmie tribe. The creek is actually named after the Davis family, which was a Snoqualmie family with ancestral ties to the area. And I've included photos of this historical family. And then, from about 1900 to 1990s, the area underwent significant development, and that's when we started, this county started experiencing drainage issues. And so, in 1996, King County installed that high-flow bypass system because the current creek alignment could only convey about the one-and-a-half-year storm event. And so the Bi, the King County High Flow Bypass was installed to kind of mitigate some of those concerns, and to essentially, any flows above what the current creek could hold, it could be essentially bypassed upstream about 500 feet from the existing. And, but despite that, the area was still undergoing a lot of issues with flooding and increased sedimentation that costs a lot of maintenance for the city to maintain roughly about one, once every, one to two times per year. So, when we started, when we incorporated and adopted a lot of this from King County, we started noticing a lot of these problems still continue. And so that's when the city started adding this to our capital plans, our Stormwater Comprehensive Plan, and our Drainage Problem Inventory List. And this kind of gives us an overview of how the project got into the city's hands and where we're at right now. And this also is a photo of the sedimentation basin flooding during one of our storm events. I believe this was taken in 2020. As you can see, there's three overflows, and they're at peak, and that water is going right to the bypass. And the previous pictures, you can see where all the sedimentation is essentially flowing And this has kind of given you an overview of where we're at in the project, starting from our progress from 2024 up to future construction that we're hoping to start in beginning of Quarter Two of 2026. And then if you go forward, there's some animations, I apologize. We're essentially in the beginning of Quarter Four, we're finishing up final design for the creek passage project, and then we'll end permitting as well. And then, early next year, we're going to start bidding and construction. And then with that in mind, we're going to be obviously meeting with council, because council actions are required for a lot of this stuff. So obviously, we'll be seeing and talking about this project in, in the months to come, specifically around construction management, grant management, and our interlocal agreements. And I'm going to give this to Audrey to discuss.
Thank you, Catherine. We will be back, I believe, next month when we work with our finance teams to present some budget adjustments. This project will be included on that list. We have our, our newest estimates for design phase are just in over the last few weeks, and their construction costs are estimated to be 11.49 million. I do want to recognize that this is, after we reach the 90% milestone, these costs could change a little bit as we approach the very final milestone, which is final design and specifications. These costs also include some of the, the work that we'll be doing in partnership with King County and Samamish Plateau. We are in progress, working on interlocal agreements with those agencies as well. Also detailed here is design, design phase costs to date, as well as our estimates for construction management support, in addition to our internal construction management team. We are very fortunate and very thankful to have received a lot of funding for this very critical project, especially from the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board, Washington State Department of Commerce, and King County. Again, I already mentioned that we'll be working with King County Parks and Samamish Plateau Sewer and Water for some interlocal agreements, so that we can partner during We have another slide that shows a full list of all the stakeholders for a complex project like this, but wanted to point out some of our key stakeholders, and it's always nice to showcase some of their logos, as they are easily identifiable. But just really thank you for all the, the collaboration throughout the project process with both our funding partners and our key stakeholders. These projects take years and years of planning and design work. You can see from this list, it's, it's not a short list. All of these different divisions, even within our department, review every phase of every single design project that, that is constructed for the community, as well as most departments in the city. Of course, these projects are presented to our city council and our community, and along the way, we are coordinating with, with this list of utility agency partners, with tribes, with our permitting requirements that we have to submit for the state, as well as national permit requirements. And of course, we're working with funding partners that have significant impact on how we design the project. Finally, as Catherine mentioned, we'll be back in 20, later this year in Quarter Four, as we complete our final design and specifications and permitting package that will go out for advertisement in February of 2026 for construction phase. We are planning to construct during the fish window, which I believe is July 1st of 2026. So very excited for this project to get going and underway. We are finalizing our easements and acquisition, our construction management contracts and other supporting documentation, as well as, we'll be back in a month or so with that budget adjustment. And then in 2026, all the fun begins, it's construction phase. We'll be finalizing our project open house schedules, our communication plan with the community, and setting up some, some celebrations for the project. With that, that was it. We're happy to take any questions.
Council?
Councilmember Clark? Thank you. Not super important, but the King County and Samamish Plateau money, does that come after you figure out construction costs? Or is it like a percentage, or how do they? I'm just trying to like, if the total's like 14 million, whatever, I'm like, how much will we get cut off of that?
That's a great question. Go ahead, please. Yeah, so essentially, to make this project the most effective and cost-effective, essentially, is to package it under one contract. So part of doing that is that the city would take on a lot of those costs that King County would be incurring, same with Samamish Plateau and Water, and then they would be responsible for reimbursing us for those costs. So the, the, the future revenue from grants and from these agreements would also be reflected in those budget adjustments.
We are currently doing the same thing for Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project.
Yeah.
It's worked out very well.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you. I was just curious about the impact on this, on East Lake Samamish Parkway, and like road closures, that sort of stuff, like how much, like road are we talking about that it would impact? And I also know that there's the sinking issue, and I'm not quite sure what the proximity of this to that area that's sinking, and, and in terms of construction, like trying to fix both things, would it happen like, you know, roughly the same time? Would there be like years in between?
Great question. In terms of the, the road closure, we will be back to council. We're revising our, our final plans. Right now, we're anticipating likely a one, one-way road closure, one, one travel lane or one, sorry, two travel lanes, but one direction road closure to install the culvert. It'll depend on how we procure that culvert as well. That'll be the main, main delay. Some of the final schedules will come in after construction phase, after bidders bid the project, and those will, they'll, they'll identify the final construct, traffic control plans for construction phase for the project. So, we're doing some parts now, we're looking at items that may require a long lead time, so that we can make sure to, to hit the project during the fish window, and looking at some preliminary traffic control plans, but those will, usually are submitted along with the bid documents by the contractor. And regarding the road stabilization project, we coordinate all of our projects to minimize the delays for the community. So, the road stabilization project is in design phase in '26 with an anticipated 2027 build.
Great, thank you.
And I have just one quick question, if there's no other questions. Councilmember Gupta, do you have anything? Okay, about the dam that you're proposing to remove. So when you showed the picture of the bird cages being overflowing, I have to assume that when that kind of rain hits, that behind that dam, it must be an even larger lake that's formed. I'm just curious about the damage that has taken place there.
At the dam currently?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, it holds back a lot of sediment. So after we remove the dam and regrade from the proposed stream realignment to existing, it's going to kind of even that grade out, and then there'll be some sediment removal and, you know, essentially redeposited within the creek. Since it's, you know, the creek's sediment, it's the best for the creek.
Okay.
But naturally, we do expect a lot of sediment deposition out into Lake Samamish, creating a natural, you know, alluvian fans and whatnot, because that's what the creek naturally is supposed to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. If there are no other questions, then we can move on. And thank you so much for staying and going through that.
Yeah, and if you guys have any questions, my email's on there, and we can talk.
And we're glad to have you.
Yes, thank you so much.
So thanks for being here.
It's great to be here.
Thank you, council.
Thank you so much, council.
We're now going to move on to public comment. The public is welcome to attend city council meetings in person, or remember, virtually, online with Zoom too. So that's another option for folks. We do have some folks that are here, hopefully. So, we will start with Jan Byrd.
This is Jan Byrd from Samamish, and I just want to thank Mayor Howe for bringing up my issue that I emailed you before the meeting tonight, my concern about the in-lu fees for the mandatory affordable housing program. And I mentioned how it's kind of, that's an issue for people that are trying to age in place. And I've lived in a tri-level home here in Samamish, I was 27 years, just under 2,400 square feet, and as I age, this is not going to continue to work for me. As you saw me kind of hobbling up here, it's starting to be a little bit of issue right now, because it's either seven steps up for bathrooms and bedrooms, or seven steps down for another bathroom and laundry area. So, and I've had some issues over the last couple, last year with decreased mobility. So I've had, twice where I've had a whole month that I've had to use hiking poles to hike up to my bathroom and back again. So, one thought was, you know, put an addition onto the house. But with these in-lu fees, you know, put a first-floor bathroom, bedroom, laundry area, 400 to 500 square feet, that would cost me like over $13,000 to over $18,000, just in this little tax, to pay for affordable housing for people that are not even here yet. But it's not helping it be more affordable for me. So I hope that is something, when you do work and clean up the code, you can make some changes to that. Because right now, I don't meet the ADA accommodation of a permanent disability, but my body's given me clues that, that's coming down the road, and I'd like to do some pre-planning for aging in place. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Matt Sandwick?
Good evening, councilmembers, city staff, and the residents of Samamish. I am Matthew Sandwick. I am the CEO of Innovation Realty Partners. We are tasked with the significant responsibility of helping the city implement most of its town center plan. We own, plan, and manage some 90 acres within 240 acres that make up the town center. We provide the city one developer to work with in planning those 90 acres for a better outcome. Tonight, I would like to address some misconceptions. I often hear people talk about the, quote, "evil developer," as if we are building in our community to take advantage of Samamish. We are not. I understand where that feeling comes from, however. Growth can be disruptive, change can be disruptive. In the past, maybe some projects elsewhere may not have lived up to expectations, but I think as a community, we can do ourselves, we do ourselves a disservice when we paint with that broad brush. Here are three things to know about us. Number one, the truth is that developers can't build whatever they want. We are working with the city council, city staff, and the people of Samamish to follow the rules and implement the vision they have set for the town center. This means making plans for growth that happen slowly over many years, not all at once. So what is our job? We bring private investment, real money and effort to make the town center vision come true. We pay for design and needed infrastructure, and partner with builders to create homes, shops, and community places that make the town center vibrant and fun. We also add important public things like infrastructure, plazas, workforce, and affordable housing, and connected trails. Second, permanent approvals between the city and developers are legally binding. I know online, there was a misleading social media post that said that developer is working without a contract, so they won't be held accountable. Not only does this not make sense, it's simply not true. And to note, city approvals are in the public domain, subject to review, not hidden away in a file cabinet, and certainly are legally binding and enforceable. Third, developers invest in real estate just like residents who own their home. Homeownership is a form of investing in your community. When a home is purchased, the buyer is investing in real estate. They own a tangible asset. It appreciates over time. For many homeowners who have lived here 10, 20, 30 years, you know what I'm talking about. So we have something in common. Together, we're both investing in Samamish. So you see, it really
Number one, the truth is that developers can't build whatever they want. We are working with the city council, city staff, and the people of Samamish to follow the rules and implement the vision they have set for the town center. This means making plans for growth that happen slowly over many years, not all at once. So what is our job? We bring private investment, real money and effort to make the town center vision come true. We pay for design and needed infrastructure and partner with builders to create homes, shops, and community places that make the town center vibrant and fun. We also add important public things like infrastructure, plazas, workforce, and affordable housing, and connected trails. Second, permanent approvals between the city and developers are legally binding. I know online, there was a misleading social media post that said that developer is working without a contract, so they won't be held accountable. Not only does this not make sense, it's simply not true. And to note, city approvals are in the public domain, subject to review, not hidden away in a file cabinet, and certainly are legally binding and enforceable. Third, developers invest in real estate just like residents who own their home. Homeownership is a form of investing in your community. When a home is purchased, the buyer is investing in real estate. They own a tangible asset. It appreciates over time. For many homeowners who have lived here 10, 20, 30 years, you know what I'm talking about. So we have something in common. Together, we're both investing in Samamish. So you see, it really does take both sides, private developers like us in the city, to bring forward the many public benefits envisioned in the town center plan. Together, we create housing choices, workforce, and affordable homes, connected trails, and open spaces, and much-needed community services. In closing, please know, I believe we will shape the town center that reflects our values. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Murphy-Raines.
Hey. Heather Murphy-Raines, 20-year resident. I'm here again because I'm deeply concerned with the direction this council has taken. Time and again, it seems you've chosen developers over residents. You wanted 150-foot towers, 15 stories, until the community had to rise up and apply pressure. You allowed developers to cut down 120-year-old heritage trees on public land, not because it was necessary, but because it seems it was more convenient and financially feasible for the developers' profit. And you made a questionable change of practice with public commentary today and in July, which meant the developers' public commentary took precedence over silence massive majority at the July draft SEIS meeting. Enforcing this full room, not to full anymore, to sit here for over two hours after your 7:25 time is disrespectful of our time, rather than provide commentary at the typical beginning. Your fiscal choices are just reckless. You raided our parks budget and diverted it to the town center. You continue to push a fear-filled narrative about a so-called 4K unit housing mandate when the Growth Management Act only requires 2.1K. And Mr. Pyle's testimony was crystal clear. We fulfill our obligations and the mandate, and the target does not have a floor or ceiling. We are in compliance. Regressive taxes have climbed with our new utility taxes, increased property taxes, fees in lieu that impact people wanting to add on to bring in aging parents and adult children, and a planned metro bond park taxes in the works I hear, all because our budget is running soon in the red while you continue to spend millions in developer incentives, endless consultants, and discuss $120 million Sahawali plans that add no capacity and lower the speed limit. And as we know, growth does not pay for growth. So any promises of retail we have as a community, which we all want, or which I do, I've always said I do, it's just not going to pay for itself with all the infrastructure and services needed. We're told there's no traffic, but traffic is here now, and adding 4K housing units and thousands of new housing units will make it far worse. You are using 2023 COVID traffic, which does not reflect back to work mandates for Amazon, T-Mobile, and Microsoft. You need to get a new model. Finally, you're ignoring wildfire and earthquake realities that leave Samamish facing evacuation times of over five hours. This is a public safety risk. Counsel, your duty is to represent current residents, to represent us. Your so-called vision statement does not represent us. This is not leadership that puts residents first. The draft plan also calls for a regional growth standard designation. We deserve the right to vote on this, because clearly, the JOT form reflects we are overwhelmingly against it. Let's take a poll in the room. How many are against 4K here? Raise your hand. Thank you. This is, and that's, half the people are gone already. You need to protect our community from reckless overdevelopment, and we need fiscal accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Darrell Face.
Darrell Face. I've lived on the plateau for 35 years. Spent 18 years coaching soccer in Little League, been involved in the community. When I quit coaching, I decided to get involved with building soccer fields and advocating for soccer fields in Issaquah and Samamish. I found that Samamish was much more open to hearing from me and my constituents than Issaquah. And I made that clear when the annexation vote came up. And I don't believe that Cloughanee would be part of Samamish without my input. But I look at the Samamish City Council now, and I don't see the same openness, the same collaboration. I don't, you guys think that you have gotten public input, but you really haven't. You guys are going to change the character of our city dramatically. Traffic, services. I go swimming at the YMCA, and I have a hard time getting a lane to swim in. Are you going to build more lanes with this fee money that you're going to get? I don't think so. Everyone in this city is going to be impacted by what you guys are deciding. If this 4,000 unit is a possibility, people need to know it. Amy said that it's not. I don't know, I guess I don't, I misunderstand. Is it possible that you have voted to allow up to 4,000 units or not? Can somebody tell me that? No? I don't get to ask questions. Ah, another thing. It appears we don't get to ask questions of you guys at these meetings. Maybe one meeting should be devoted to that. Okay? So I think your process is the problem. I think come up with your plan and let the people vote on it. And that was, if they vote for it, good to go. If they vote against it, then you know it's not what they want. Okay? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yeah. Just a point of clarification. You can ask questions we can't answer, but you can always email us, any question that you have, absolutely. So Gillian Wallace.
Greetings. My name is Gillian Wallace, and I live in the historic town of Inglewood. I am the founder of Inglewood United for Public Roads. And along with many of my neighbors, we have worked and donated hundreds of hours to the city in doing research and polling and gathering the representatives, so that I have the majority of the residents of the Inglewood plat who support the Inglewood United for Public Roads. We thank you for offering a inclusive environment where we are allowed to speak, because there are places where we are not allowed to speak. And thank you for providing us the ability to have a neighborhood night out, where we can celebrate our community and the lighting and the security and our neighbors, where we're allowed to present and be, present our free information that otherwise, we were looking into how to, how to have a church host us so that we can just get our information to our neighbors. Because this is important information, and we need to make sure that it is displayed to everybody. But thank you for providing the platform for us to speak. Thank you for having the community available to us. And we look forward to our public proclamation on Thursday, which will hopefully document for permanent records that the streets are public and that it has, everything has been adopted, as the letter has, from Scott has displayed to us. And we thank you for listening to us. We thank you for hearing us and for allowing us to help, because our community is bringing this information. We had several people who were digging in dusty storage room files for this information that honestly, the city should have probably done the research first, right? And the community is what had to step up and provide this information that honestly saved us from having to argue about who is covering the, like, the cement or potholes in the urban, what's it, the urban tree and everything like that, where it's a safety hazard. So thank you very much for providing this opportunity to speak over these last few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Upend or dinsed? Or dinsa? Sorry, I'm not quite sure, the last name. Glenn Byer.
I haven't been texting, I've been taking notes on my phone. I use QuickNote. So my name is Glenn Byer. Thank you for letting me speak, Mayor. You and I know each other. I've been up here for 31 years. I have a four-year career in construction and facility management that spans private sector, public sector, all that stuff. I think I heard earlier that it was pretty expensive, like 3/4 of a million dollars, to do a study that was approved to go to 4,000 units. I'm kind of concerned that since there was so much public opposition to 4,000 units, that the council would spend our tax dollars to do a study to look at 4,000 units. That doesn't make sense to me. How many of the, have we ever asked how many of the people commuting to Samamish to work want to live in multifamily housing units? The police, the fire, the teachers? They probably want the same thing that most all of our single-family residents want. They want a house, they want a yard, they want places for their kids to play. So are we building affordable housing that people working in Samamish will never occupy? Right? That's something that should be considered. Councilmember Stewart brought up the transitional housing, and I talked to David out in the hallway. There's some definite restrictions that need to be put on that. We don't need to repeat what Redmond is doing. How will we ensure that the affordable housing goes to people that work up here on the plateau? Right? We're not building affordable housing for people that live in Issaquah or Renton or Redmond. If we're building affordable housing, it's for people that work on the plateau. What can you do to limit that? Retail spaces. You know, we lost Ace Hardware. Why did we lose Ace Hardware? Because an Illinois developer came in and bought out the property and raised the rate so much that Ace moved. So we get a Petco, whoop-de-doo, and a Trader Joe's. So now, if you want hardware in the middle of a project, you got to drive to Redmond or you have to drive to Issaquah. So when we start looking at retail coming in, how do we ensure that out-of-state developers don't take over that property and jack up the rent so that the retail that we need as Samamish residents goes away? Okay? That was another one of my things. Did we have competition for the developer? He spoke that this, the developer came up and talked and said he's doing the whole thing. Was there competition to decide that that person was the best developer to develop the town center? I don't know. I, you know, it would be interesting to find that out. And someone else already brought up about the traffic. 2023, everybody was working from home. Right? But then, oh, sorry. I don't have to repeat it. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Richard Johnson. Okay. Let's see, Cheryl Wagner. Brad Harrington.
Yeah, Brad Hergis, resident for, now, 34, 35 years. Construction, 40-plus years. Yeah. And I'll ask him, you know, he's talking about, I was out there with David Pyle talking about stuff. I'll continue on his little speech, some of the stuff that I wanted to say. But yes, a lot of people are going to be called back to work. So now, the people that have been sitting in there for the last five years, working at home, will be out on the road. I drove a work van for most of my career. And I'll tell you what, COVID was probably the best time I ever had, because there's nobody on the road. And to sit here and listen to David Pyle and talking to him, the concurrency tests that were run that had problems previously when they were building stuff up here that would, you could build a thousand units and it would never fail, but you could build one house. And a concurrency would say, well, can't build that one house. Because why? Because it had a reset fault that once it hit a certain amount of numbers, it would reset itself to zero. So that would never fail, the concurrency test. Now, I've been told that this different now and everything else, so it'd be fine. But when we get to the other parts of traffic, and you want to say that 4,000 units, 2,100 units, is it going to impact traffic? Well, you haven't based it on, are you basing it on two cars per trap, per house, per unit? One car per unit? Could there be three cars per unit? You don't know. You haven't told us anything. And I understand that you guys, from listening to this now, are tasked to do what the state is telling us to do, which is a problem. I understand that. But you're not giving us, like, some of this stuff, the information that we need. I'm not against contractors. They provided me a livelihood for 40 years. I'm against just unfettered growth, just because you think that we need to do it, which obviously, Dave Pyle said, we don't have to. But what I say before, and a lot of times too, is if we aren't building roads going out of here that are five-lane or more, then you're putting lipstick on a pig, because you're not going to freaking get any more volume. If you're putting two-lane road, bicycles, whatever, and I understand people want to do bicycles, it's not feasible around here for that much. And there's a very limited amount of people that ride bicycles. So I see my time's out. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. Gisha Govin.
Hello, everyone. Hi. When I came here today, I didn't intend to speak, to be honest. I came to listen and learn. But something stood out to me that was so glaring, I went and put my name down for public comment. And that was the traffic impact. A lot of people have already mentioned it. 2023 was an anomaly. We were all working from home. 2024, people started going back. 2025, I think we are back to pre-COVID levels. Everyone's going into work. But when that consultant sat over there and said, we used 2023 data to model traffic impact, and we found no impact, what surprised me was, none of you asked him if that data was realistic. You were poking everything. You jumped down Kent's throat on the data that he used. It's not so many million dollars, it's that many million dollars. You tried to put David on a spot to tell him that your policies worked. But none of you asked him, is the data you're using to mark traffic impact realistic? And that stood out to me, that none of you asked him that question. And I think you didn't ask him because it didn't fit your narrative. And I think you need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Samantha Tall? Yes, no?
Good evening. Actually, not so good anymore. It would have been good if this would have happened about two hours ago, two hours and a half ago? Something like that, according to your agenda, not mine. Many of the concern that was raised to you online, council members thought, remained unanswered. For example, how are you going to address the overpopulation of our current middle and high schools? While teachers matter, if they stand in front of an empty classroom because the kids didn't make it into their classroom, because the hallways are overpopulated, overpacked, they have nobody to teach. Our kids' education will get hurt by this. Second, I don't appreciate condescending. Second, I don't appreciate condescending. We didn't spend those hours in those meetings because we don't hold the job. Third, and most important, mayor, follow your own timelines. Wasting our time is not showing any respect to the residents who came in today because they care. And don't condescend us by telling us how great we have done so far. And then continue wasting our time and not let us speak. And last, your solution to build first and deal with the consequences and problems created from that build later on might put us to risk, life-threatening risk. Why not do those first and then built? Because we don't have the money? Well, that's what we need to figure out. That's the point of this entire thing. Figure out how we are getting the money to build the infrastructure first, the school, the roads, the wildlife, the, everything else first, not the units, not the buildings. You care about life, you're risking everybody with this kind of decisions. I'm asking you to stop speaking for us and condescending above us. I'm asking you to let us each have our own voice. Respect that, and by doing so, you'll respect us.
Thank you. And Beau, I'm not sure, Rains?
Beau Rains.
Sorry.
Okay. Hi, I'm Beau Rains. I've lived in Samamish for about 20 years, just over 20 years now. Funny thing, I've been making PowerPoint presentations for almost 37 years. And, you know, I've shared lots of information, convincing people of things, just educating them of things. And over time, I've done it for a while, you get a feeling of how long it takes to do those things. The agenda had 55 minutes of time to go over three agenda topics. I found it surprising that as the two ladies speaking about the fish, that's when the question was asked, how much time do they need? Hopefully, that should have been done in advance. Same thing with David Pyle's two presentations. He had 30, 36, 36 slides, I think it was. That takes a long time to go through, plus then the questioning or pontificating that happens afterwards. So, the fact that the agenda, your words, clearly states that the public comment comes after the business portion, it also clearly states the business portion was 55 minutes. It's unfortunate that you chose to sell, or to show one side of the story, right? This is the one point that wanted to present your side of the data that says, hey, we're supposed to be going through this business and you guys need to wait. That is true. But the other side of the story was, hey, you had 55 minutes for doing business. That same methodology of, hey, here's this one point that we're gonna talk about, that's been something that the city council has done repeatedly over the lifetime of talking about this, the town center, the Englewood Hills Road. It's been happening a lot. And it makes people question what you do as a council. Why do you talk about this one thing? Why do you change the order of public comment? Why do you make a meeting start 30, 30 minutes, an hour early? The September meeting, different time schedule, right? Out of the blue, there's an August meeting, right? Those types of things make the council, make people question what the council is doing, what's the council's intentions? And there's so many times where you focus on the one piece, right? Is 2,100, 4,000, is it a mandate? Is it a cap? You know, you listen to David Pyle, they'll say no, right? Listen to the city council members talk, they'll say it's a mandate. It makes us question. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Vila.
Good afternoon, Mayor Howe, Deputy Mayor Lamb, and councilmembers, and of course, our wonderful residents. All of us together make up this beautiful city that we call home. I wasn't originally planning to speak today, but I believe that speaking up is always more important than staying silent. I wanted to start by bringing attention to the humongous public turnout that resulted in two key city council meetings, both on July 15th and now today, September 9th. And this just shows how much the public cares about this town center project and the direction in which it is heading. The council also cares about this, and it is a collective thing that we all share. Respect is key here, both from the council in putting public voice at the forefront of what is happening and the public in doing the rest to hear the council's ideas and alternatives. Over the past few months, I have seen this community grow more divided than ever before. The topic of town center has caused many of us to forget that we are all here for doing what is best for Samamish. We sometimes just have different ways of thinking about it. We, some of us often tend to spin information in a way that supports our opinions instead of focusing on what really matters here, which are the facts behind the town center, making sure that we study this as well as possible. At times, I've seen us focus more on attacking each other rather than focusing on the actual topic of town center and what it will mean for Samamish. The truth is that all of our hopes, all of our suggestions, and all of our concerns are valid. Our lived experiences in Samamish caused many of us to fear what the town center will mean for our schools, our traffic, our public safety, our trees, and our wildlife. I myself, as a lover of all animals in nature, personally worry about how we will implement wildlife corridors and many other things. And we all have our own things that we are thinking about here. And just acknowledging that for everybody is very important in creating a better sense of community and trying to combat this divide that has consumed us all in this moment. Residents, please remember to read through the final draft SEIS on September 12th. And not only that, but let's continue to ask good questions and hold everyone accountable to a safe and reliable future for Samamish. Thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you. I believe we have one more comment in the room. Paul, did you want to give comment?
Good evening, City Council, Paul Stikney-Samamish. A lot of good comments today, a lot of information presented. I saw something online recently on a social media post that a longtime resident wrote, who was asked a question, how come you take a certain stand? And they wrote a very compelling, short answer, because I have to live my values. Well, I have to live my values, and I've been involved in Samamish since before incorporation. And the one thing our community hasn't done is to study, how do the people that live in our community over time, both economic and, you know, demographic changes and workforce, how does that match up with the housing supply that's on the ground? And we have to keep in mind that that housing supply was enabled 85% by King County that planned over a far larger area than our city. And our city, for reasons of its own, did almost all large, single-family housing. So, for those that have followed what I've been talking about, chi, citywide housing being out of balance, im, you know, balance. I'm against town center 2,000 or 4,000 because we don't know. What we need is a community on a citywide scale and where it should go. And that's what we need to do. Maybe there will be a majority who learns what true housing needs are over time, the consequences of meeting those needs over time, the upsides and downsides, the traffic impact, but we haven't had that discussion. And by the way, the first comprehensive plan was mentioned by, you know, Pyle. There was a planning advisory board for four years. If you've never read the first comp plan, you should. It was a stunning piece of high-quality work. What it was missing was what's the housing balance we need as a community over time? And I have asserted recently, as I've come to understand this more, that if we meet some affordable housing for local needs and some market-rate houses, primarily from 500 to a million four, on average, if those homes are put in centers, whichever center, they'll create about a quarter to a third of the traffic of large, single-family homes, less than that in students. And there's a way to have our cake and eat it too. Very little impact of a fair amount of what I call A, B, and C housing that more likely than not wouldn't require new roads. And if it did, we'd have the money to pay for it. We need to think outside of the box and really think long-term, not short-term. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you. I believe we're done with comment in the room. Is that a fair statement? And if so, we can move to online.
We have three pre-registered callers. If you'd like to give comment, please raise your hand.
Can I speak?
Yes, Lynn, when you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, and deputy mayor, and the councilmembers. My name is Lynn Chen, and I am a Samamish resident. I want to speak tonight about the planned closure of the Redmond Fred Meyer store. While it is located in Redmond, it serves many Samamish families, including my own. It is where we shop for groceries, fill prescriptions, and buy everyday household items. Its closure would create a real hardship for families across both cities. The community concern is significant. I started a petition just a week ago, and already over 300 people have signed, with many leaving heartfelt comments about how important this store is to them. This shows how deeply the closure will affect people throughout Samamish, Redmond, and nearby communities. Kroger, the parent company of Fred Meyer, is one of the largest grocery chains in the nation. Yet, even a company of this size is closing stores in Washington because theft, crime, and the rising costs of doing businesses, taxes, utilities, licensing fees, and insurance make them unprofitable. If a giant like Kroger finds it unsustainable to operate here, small and the local businesses stand even less chance of survival. I was encouraged to see Seattle officials directly engage with Kroger about the Lake City Fred Meyer closure, which brought greater transparency to the situation. I believe Samamish and Redmond should do the same, to open dialogue with Kroger and the property owner, and to explore such solutions such as improved lease terms, targeted tax relief or incentives, and a stronger security support like increased police presence. I respectfully urge Samamish to join Redmond in advocating for residents and pressing for practical solutions that could keep this essential store open. This is not just about one store, it's about protecting the vitality of our local economy and the daily lives of our residents. If even Kroger can survive here, what message does that stand to every smaller business in our community? Thank you for your time and the leadership.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next public comment.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, all the councilmembers, city manager, and the audience. This is Mary Victor. I've been participating in city meetings for over 10 years now, and I wanted to speak about some things that I heard today, to at least correct some things, if not reemphasize things that I see that are desperately needed for our city to succeed. The first thing is, is growth does pay for growth, a part of it, and there are impact fees. And when the city collects those impact fees, they have to be used in a certain amount of time. And if they're not used, you lose them. So, when there was a lot of development, the city got a lot of impact fees, and they looked at Southeast 4th Street, which now has the roundabouts going through it over to 228th. They said that road needs to get done, and if they hadn't voted with that council at that time to do the Southeast 4th Street, they would have lost the money. I believe there was also a Transportation Improvement Board grant, which those are large, and they only work when you have complete streets. Complete streets mean you have to have sidewalks on both sides. They actually chose to underground all the utilities, so you don't see the utility poles there, and it made the plan for town center so it could happen. So, it's not something that the city went out and did or was costed to do. It was money that they got that needed to be used for development where the development made the most sense. And I'm also gonna mention Southeast 6th Street. The city owns half that road. That's where the lower commons goes to, and I believe there are community gardens there. And I know when I took my Washington Native Plant Society test, we parked there. So, the developers doing their part, and the city's doing it as one project, but there is a responsibility for the city. So, it's just not freebies that a developer's getting, and I think it's important not to have misinformation when people speak. The other thing is, is the crossover point where the city's revenues that they get and the expenses, when they don't match up, you get a crossover point where the expenses go more. I've watched council after council chasing that, and it's, everybody's been trimming and trying to have the right staff and everything. And we're to the point that in 2029, the city won't have the money to go forward. That's one of the reasons the Financial Sustainability Group said that we needed to have the 6% utility. A lot of other cities have it. Issaquah had it at 3% and increasing it to 6%. And I think there's about 180 out of like 280 cities that have it. But that $11 million that we're targeted to get, that only helps with one year. So, we need a way out of this. And if you build townhouses or just large, single-family homes, 2,000 of them, you'll have the impact of four times that amount because of the traffic and the kids in schools that it will cause. Whereas if you look and you build houses that are stacked or flats, or smaller houses in different diverse housing that we need, we need to look at what we need. And a lot of it does need to go into town center because the density there is the most appropriate.
Thank you.
We have one more pre-registered public comment. James, when you're ready.
James Eastman, Samamish, Washington. Set the council packet describing some of my comments in anticipation of tonight's meeting, the middle housing. I've been looking into that for months, and it's really important to me because I have land ready to go. Unfortunately, I found that I might be ready to go with land, but the city's middle housing ordinance is not quite yet ready to go. Community Development's done actually a pretty good job of getting that ordinance, clearing the barriers there. There's a few things they could do to sweeten the pot, per se, trying to steer clear of the full, long subdivision would be one of them. Another one would be if you're building something smaller, duplexes, townhomes, you have to have two-hour fire ratings, you have to have all this increased scrutiny on your building practice in a small area, and the reviews take longer. building practice in a small area, and the reviews take longer. So if you're going to go out of your way to design a really awesome townhome plan or whatever for a smaller unit, and you get it approved, you won't be able to use that again and again in other locations if you're going to commit to building middle housing and townhomes. So there's a little bit community and development can do, but I appreciate them putting that on the agenda tonight and at least bringing it here. My big concerns, though, are with Public Works. It was clear to me in the packet that community development and Public Works aren't talking to each other. Those two exhibits in the packet tonight, neither of those comply with Public Works standards. Public Works standards, a local street has to be 60 feet wide. Those streets on both those exhibits, especially with the duplexes, they were like 30 feet wide. Those are private streets. And in our Public Works standards, the most amount of units or houses you can have on a private street is nine. The longest a private street can be is 150 feet. So like, yeah, I appreciate Tereen Holmes or somebody put that forward as part of their pre-app, but there's just no in the Public Works code that would allow that to happen. And so it's clear to me that Public Works hasn't cleared the barriers yet that we need for middle housing. So I'd love it if David or if Scott or somebody just verified that, sent those two exhibits to Public Works and say, hey, do these clear your standards? I mean, could we actually do this in Samamish for middle housing? Or do we need to update the 2016 Public Works standards? Pretty sure the answer that's going to come back is those standards need to be updated. So until they're updated, we can't really do middle housing here. I also have an access question for Public Works I asked four or five months ago. I've officially been on record for two months paying $1,500 for a director's answer to ask what an access point is. Haven't heard back. So we got to get Public Works in the game on this middle housing. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
That's all for online comment.
Thank you. Now it's time for council reports. City manager report. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very brief. Just quick reminders, the last two farmers markets are tomorrow and next week, and then that will wrap the season. So this is the last chance to come out and buy some produce and visit our vendor, excuse me, visit our vendors. I also want to share a couple of Arts Commission events that are happening. There is a event happening this Friday at Beaver Lake Lodge, the Tall Timber Tune Wranglers. It's an old-time string band, and they're playing from Friday evening from 7:00 to 8:00. Everyone is welcome. And we are doing, the Arts Commission is sponsoring mini haunted houses. They're inviting the community to design and decorate their own mini haunted houses or fall harvest house to be displayed at City Hall. Folks can drop off their mini houses from September 15th to 30th, and they will be displayed in the lobby all October. So looking forward to that. And one final reminder, Lewis Thompson Road Project went back to one-way as of yesterday. It's one-way up the hill. Detour stays in place through October 31st while we continue to install curb gutter sidewalk, new driveways, retaining walls, et cetera. So just a reminder that that's happening as you're moving around town. Again, a little more pain on that one, and then we will be done, primarily done with the project, and really looking forward to that. So thank you, Mayor. Back to you.
Other reports. Deputy Mayor Lamb.
I have a solid waste committee meeting, solid waste advisory committee meeting on Friday. I sent out the agenda. The two main topics are the 2026 legislative agenda and Cedar Hills construction update. Thanks.
I'll just mention that I'll be spending the entire day interviewing candidates for the new Fire Chief to replace Chief Lane. So if there are no other comments, and this is a study session, we are adjourned.